This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
We're all present and the exec team is here, so I'll call the meeting to order. May I ask, are we in compliance with open meetings laws?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Lyons?
Here.
Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Zur?
Here.
Commissioner Becca?
Here.
Commissioner McClellan?
Here.
If you have more willing and able, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll start tonight as we do every night with our public forum. Each member of the that signed up will be allotted four minutes to address the board, providing that they have additional or new information that hasn't been previously shared with the board. I do apologize, I will cut you off at four minutes, so just do a timer up on the screen for those of you that are joined us through WebEx. The school board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. Tonight we have seven and possibly eight, we're doing a, yes, never mind, I've just been told that we have a, we have eight tonight, we've gotten a sound issue. Fixed, the first to speak tonight is Becca Hears.
Hi, my name is Becca Hears. I'm in a parent group that was created for parents in the Eau Claire School District to support each other during this unusual school year. I'd like to take my time to read just a few of the comments that parents have written in the past few weeks. As I read them, I would like each and every member of the school board, the superintendent, and anyone involved in the decision-making process of our children's education to realize that despite their best efforts, this is what is happening to our kids. Our children deserve better than what the school administration is offering. After the last several weeks of virtual learning, I have realized that even once schools back to normal, we need to take a deep look into the quality of their education. My child can survive a fever, cough, and body aches. However, their future cannot survive the consequences of this poorly executed learning environment. These years are critical in developing their work ethic, and the support and encouragement of face-to-face teachers and peers is critical. My son has been an honorable student and has always enjoyed school. I have never seen him so discouraged and angry about the lack of participation by the teachers that are supposed to be teaching these classes. What is wrong with the school district that they're allowing this kind of instruction to take place? It seems to me that these teachers need to be held accountable for their time. A big worry is whether the students were going to get online and participate in class. Well, it seems it should be vice versa with the teachers. My daughter has autism and just started ninth grade. They called to tell me they can't offer her the service help they're supposed to offer because of COVID. It's really sad the kids that need help are not getting it. What happened to no student left behind? The school district, city, and county are failing to see the challenges of the students and effective decisions on their emotional well-being and learning. The worst fallout from this is yet to come, and I'm not talking COVID. The schools need to listen and rethink. I'm shocked that kids that don't have help at home are just falling more and more behind. The school board doesn't care about the struggles of kids or parents. They don't care that daycares are open and many are doing just fine. None of this makes any sense. Action City can be open, but not schools. It's like a terrible dream watching my son struggle teaching himself. He gets so frustrated that he just withdraws. I believe that the majority of teachers are doing the best they can, but that they have been handed a horrible plan. ECASD vision statement states, "Our vision is to challenge minds, build relationships, and nurture individual growth to prepare all students for post-secondary success." ECASD is not currently meeting any of these for many children. Most importantly, the emotional well-being of Eau Claire students is currently headed in a scary direction. I also worry about the horrible GPAs and misknowledge base that is going to affect them if they would like to pursue a college education. It scares me and brings me to tears how far behind our students are getting. How and when will they make this up? The emotional aspects need to be addressed too. How many of you feel this virtual school expectation from us parents is negatively affecting your relationship with your child? My sophomore has always struggled academically, wants to do, needs support. ECASD is failing in general to provide education, but the children who need more support are being left in the dust. The excuses from the bar are just not valid. My son is a junior, never failed a class, is in the three-sport athlete. He's a very athletic kid and is currently failing FIAED, along with chemistry, algebra, English, and US government. It's like a terrible dream watching him struggle teaching himself. He gets so frustrated that he just withdraws socially. Once he fails and winter sports are taken away from him because of grades, I see him giving up completely. I feel that the EC system has failed my son. It's hard to read these words about a community and school system I care so much about, but these unintended consequences are the reality of our community's response to COVID, a virus that rarely affects children and has a 99% survival rate. This isn't something that can be blamed on our national or state leaders. The accountability needs to be on the school district, and I hope you reflect on these consequences as future decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Lori Pinkrats.
Hi again, Lori Pinkrats. My oldest graduated from Memorial in 2019. My daughter Ava is a senior at Memorial, my youngest son Gabe is in eighth grade at South. We are all very appreciative of their teachers and their efforts so far this year. Thank you for offering this time for public speaking. It's really not the most efficient way to have a dialogue regarding this important topic, but I do appreciate the time. After these first few weeks of implementing the educational model that you've adopted for the school system, we are getting a sense of its effectiveness. The virtual/hybrid model has many limitations, and we are concerned about the challenges and the lasting effects this will have on our children. The model that has been implemented is just not translating well in real life. In the previous months, we have consistently heard about the risks of returning to school and the risks associated with this virus and exposing the kids in school, but we haven't heard nearly enough about the risks associated with asynchronous learning. Loss of instructional time, lack of structure, interrupted teacher contact days, stressed-out staff, anxious students, inconsistent social connection with teachers and peers, lack of student accountability, inadequate amount of time to prepare and present important content, and disruption in continuity in learning. The list seems to go on. As parents, we are looking to you, the elected members of the school board, to assist in keeping our area schools on track to provide exceptional learning opportunities for our students, as well as to ensure that our schools can provide the materials and instruction required for students to advance to the next level. The hybrid virtual learning model that you have adopted on behalf of our students and teachers is not currently providing these opportunities. We are now looking for you to help right the ship, right, to hold each other accountable for the decisions that you made in August here at the local level in Eau Claire, not at the state level, not at the federal level, but the decisions that have been made here in Eau Claire that are having widespread negative consequences for our children. As elected board members, we are holding you accountable for the decisions that you have made and continue to support, and we're hopeful that you can have the courage to make changes that are necessary. There has to be a better option for providing quality education for our children. Synchronous learning is happening in various forms in school districts all over the country. Our students need synchronous learning here in Eau Claire. Superintendent Johnson and board members, my question for you tonight is this. After weeks of reading parent emails and letters, hearing four-minute speaking allotments and phone calls, and now, based on the midterm feedback that we've been getting from the schools, are you willing to meet us in person with a small group of parent representatives from schools that you make the decisions for? You really need to hear our concerns, see our faces, feel our passion, hear our suggestions, and listen to our children's experiences with this educational model. Are you willing to do that to improve the educational effectiveness in the Eau Claire schools? We are all looking toward a common goal of effective and complete education for our kids, and I know we can get there if we work together. It's time. I realize it's not on the agenda for tonight, but I hope the answer to my question will be yes. The parents, the students, and the teachers of our district really want to hear that answer. So in closing, I want to mention that my kiddos really want to stay enrolled in their current schools. They love it there. My daughter wants to graduate an old aide, and Andy and I really want to keep them enrolled. But I have to be honest that this educational model is making it increasingly difficult for us to continue with that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Joshua Andrews.
Good evening. I'm the Reverend Joshua Andrew, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my family members enrolled in the Eau Claire Area School District. I would like to begin by recognizing the difficult position in which the school board finds itself during these trying times of attempting to educate effectively in the face of a major pandemic. The effort and self-sacrifices of our teachers and administrators are noble and invaluable, and we do appreciate you. However, if we step back and evaluate the current state of instruction in our district, there is no denying that the present hybrid system is problematic and not satisfying the needs of students and parents. This was evident in the superintendent's interview with WEAU, as well as the comments you're hearing this evening. While I am not opposed to a well-developed online learning platform, the reality is that the rush to transition the majority of our students to some type of hybrid model has resulted in the absence of cautious curricular design and the systematic development of instruction that is prerequisite to effective online learning, resulting instead in a reactionary emergency form of remote learning that seems unorganized and unprepared. The subsequent effect on instructional quality and academic achievement presents a challenge to the district going forward. Everyone agrees we need to safeguard our children from the dangers of COVID-19. But I would urge the board to consider that the risk of this pandemic is greater than just that of catching COVID-19. Did you know that 20 years following the Chernobyl disaster, the United Nations concluded that the largest public health crisis resulting from this horrible accident was not the hazard of the radiation poisoning, but the rise in mental health problems resulting from the reaction of people to the crisis response? Likewise, the students of this era may face unprecedented repercussions as a result of the school board's response to this pandemic. What we know from the broader community is that in the absence of meaningful social interaction, mental health is deteriorating, including the development of PTSD symptoms and suicidal ideations. Destructive behavior through drug and alcohol abuse is also on the rise, and likely so among children as well. From a social perspective, the response to COVID-19 is also causing relational traumas that may take years to heal. I would encourage the school board to conduct a revised risk assessment that weighs the relatively diminutive risk of the virus in our student population against the considerable academic, social, and psychological damages caused by the response to COVID-19. I urge you to work with the local health department to expand in-person learning opportunities for the entire elementary student population and for students with special needs, as you have already done with grades presently attending four days a week. These students face the least amount of physical risk from the virus when protected by proper safety interventions, but are the most susceptible to the collateral damage of remaining in a hybrid learning model. Furthermore, for those who are unable or unwilling to return to school, I urge the board to adopt a fully synchronous delivery of classroom instruction. Doing so will eliminate many of the conflicts students are experiencing now with overlapping classes and obligations. Dedicated class times are the expectation of students in our schools, and it should be the expectation of students while they're at home, especially if the district is providing learning equipment for these students. These options represent an effective solution going forward that might serve to minimize the extensive potential damage of this pandemic period while simultaneously averting the crisis of a mass exodus into homeschooling communities, for example. Thank you for your time and consideration, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Craig Manthe.
Hello, school board. Thank you for the time that you've given us this evening. I wanted to cover a few points this evening, mainly talking about education, sick policy, and health and wellness. As far as the COVID-19 epidemic, we're all familiar with the numbers. We know that 99% plus of us will be okay from from this virus, especially the kids. Kids in general really are not having too many ill effects from this. Like was just mentioned in the previous speaker, some of the ill effects are from our response to the COVID-19 epidemic, so education being one of them. Lack of guidance from the teachers is resulting in a subpar education. Homeschool doesn't work for all of our kids. I have two daughters. My younger daughter, she definitely needs that guidance from from the teachers to help her actually learn. Right now, her parents are basically her teachers, my wife and myself. We both have full-time jobs. Our children go to school Mondays and Tuesdays, and then the other three days of the week, they're home. Fortunately, my wife is home, so they're home trying to learn while she works. That is not always optimal. I do not work in the home, so when I come home, I have to try and fill in the blanks. Our girls need help, and we try to do the best we can, but it's definitely not as good as it could be, you know, with the kids actually in school. The parent, single parents, I can't even imagine. It's got to be nearly impossible for those parents to do, you know, their jobs as parents, you know, income earners, and then also the educators as well. Many of the kids are going to be left behind, so how will they catch up? They will have a hard time and catch up. How will our children's education progress? Every time there's an illness, will we shut down again? How will we deal with this next illness? Is this an effective, sustainable situation? Another question is, is this a precedent we're setting for the future? We're already talking about flu season, and it seems we're worried about the flu season. Is this going to be the next thing? We're going to shut down for the flu season. Will we shut down for the cold? Is this what we want to teach our children when we have to deal with difficulties? Do we just shut down and escape our difficulties? As far as the health department, health department should be assisting the school district in deciding on policy. The health department should not be making policy for our children's educations, especially since our kids are at a low risk. Another thing I want to touch on is sick policy. I just read the message the other day about our sick policy. Again, back to those single parents, this sick policy potentially would have a parent be home for 24 days. This is absolutely unreasonable, unsustainable. Maybe on paper, if, you know, looking at a virus, it makes sense, but in the real world, we're talking real world, there are parents that need to be home or that have to work and pay for rent, pay for food. Telling someone to be home for 24 days is unreasonable and just potential loss of job. How employers cope with an employee that might be gone for three weeks? My employer can't handle something like that. Policy needs to be grounded in reality, a policy that real people can actually work with. It's almost as if being sick will become a crime. But last thing I want to touch on, there needs more conversation about health and wellness. Instead of talking about health and wellness, we get a message saying that a flu vaccine is the best way to deal with the flu. Your immune system building that is the best way to deal with any illness for that matter. That being said, thank you for the time you've given us, and we look forward to your responses.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Julie Perkins.
Good evening. Just making sure that you can hear me on this, because I had two devices going, just to make sure. Thank you. And the topic I was calling in about is the mask-wearing for the children in school and whether there's a clear set policy that can be viewed with clear expectations and consequences for the children to be made aware of what that looks like. Obviously, they're not going to be not wearing masks at all, but I'm hearing conversations where there are infractions and children being turned into the office for different types of mask-wearing, whether it's below their nose or not all the way up over their face or completely in the right spot. They're having to go to the office or getting an infraction for that. And I wasn't able to find any policy written that I could review. And then just wondering if it's been presented to the children so they understand what the consequences might be for the mask-wearing. Mine is pretty short and sweet, and that's actually all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker tonight is Brittany Malone.
Hello. Thank you for listening to me tonight and giving me this time. I, first of all, just want to praise all the teachers for adjusting in the ways that they've needed to this school year. It's been nothing short of radical. And I know that they're putting in time more than they are being paid for. And I also want to echo all the other people who have been on here, just with all the different concerns, both mentally, emotionally, socially, educationally for students. I wanted to speak because I wanted to share our own personal experience. I tested positive for COVID, and therefore my family had to quarantine for 24 days. 24 days. That's my kids not seeing people in person, and that's my husband and I having to be home from work for 24 days. In that period of time, my kids missed six different days of classes. You know, hybrid model, they're only in school two days a week. They missed six classes. That's a lot of content when you're a freshman in high school, when you're a new sixth grader at South. My kids have felt overwhelmed. They've felt behind. They feel like they are missing very important class content that would reflect their assignments and their tests and their scores. And my kids are straight-A students. They're overachieving students, and I'm very thankful for that, but this has been extremely stressful for them as they are feeling like they are getting handed a short stick. The content is not being shared with them. Their assignments, most of them have been on canvas. Some of them have not. My kids are receiving Ds and Fs right now because we have been doing our part in quarantining and staying home, and they are failing their classes because they're missing out on tests and other content that they're doing in the classroom. We need to address this. You, as a school board, needs to address this. We need to change from asynchronous learning to a synchronous learning system. Many different school areas around us, every different towns are doing this. Effectively, people are staying healthy. This is now the second time I myself have had COVID. I had it in February, and I just had it again a couple of weeks ago, and none of my family caught it, including vulnerable people that I was around, that are elderly, have heart conditions, have diabetes, are pregnant. This isn't quite as scary as we're thinking it is. I understand for a certain portion of the population, it definitely is, but the majority of us are going to deal with a very strong case of influenza. It's the same feeling. We need to figure out ways to better this learning system for our students, not just for now, but for long term. The emotional and mental health concerns are going to be through the roof. Families that are unsafe and unstable, this has got to be explosive for them. And I, we need to address general concerns about all of our students, as well as our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Piker.
Hey, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I don't have a big written speech prepared, but it seems like there is a theme for this eve, if there is a theme for this evening. It has to do with the asynchronous learning, because that's what I wanted to discuss as well. Last winter, when we were shut down for the first time and we weren't doing any of the synchronous learning, I called my contacts. I do a fair amount of disability advocacy work, and I called my contacts down at Disability Rights Wisconsin, and I was trying to figure out why are we not able to do synchronous learning? What are the, what are the roadblocks? And they said, there are no legal roadblocks. It is happening all over the state. And I thought, okay, well, that was just in the spring. You know, we'll adjust when the fall comes around, and we'll go to synchronous learning. And again, we started out the same way, and we're at that point still. And to hear the story like Brittany just told of her kids missing out on 24 days of instruction, and now, as you see the numbers of kids, more and more kids having to quarantine for a longer and longer period of time, it seems impossible to me that they will ever, ever be able to catch up. I was looking at the DPI website about required direct pupil instruction, and if there are, let's see, 1,050 hours of direct pupil instruction in grades one through six and 1,137 hours of required direct pupil instruction in grades seven through 12, I cannot for the life of me see how you will be getting anywhere close to that. If we're not doing, if we're not counting days of instruction, which is what we used to count, now we're counting hours of instruction, I can't understand that there is any way of getting close to those mandated minutes with asynchronous instruction. And that doesn't even begin to touch on what's happening with IEPs. I don't even think that they've begun to address compensatory services from last spring, much less the amount of compensatory services that are probably going to be needed for this school year. And so it just seems to me that it would be the really appropriate time to relook at that decision to do asynchronous learning and see if now is a time, now that you understand, you're hearing the parent concerns, if you can take a look at that again, and it's hard. It's hard to look at your own decisions and say, we might have made a mistake, or we can do better, or we're going to ease into something new, and, and ask for the public to bear with you in humility and grace and say, we are learning alongside of you. I think that there is so much room for you to come forward to the public and say, we're listening, we're learning, let's try something new. This might not work better. We're going to start it just in elementary school first. We're going to go with synchronous learning in elementary school, and then we're going to go upwards, and by the end of the semester, we'll be through, you know, by next semester, we'll be at the high school level. However it might look, I think that you're up to the task. I know a number of you personally. I know your heart. I know your commitment. I know why you're sitting in those chairs. It's because education matters so much to you, so I just want to thank you. I want to thank you for your commitment and your drive. I know you're exhausted. I want to give a shout out to the administrative staff and the teaching staff. We see you. We see how hard you're working, and we really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Our final speaker tonight is Brian Renton.
Good evening. Before I get started, I would like to go over what my agenda is and more specifically what I'm hoping to convey. In order to do this, here's perspective from my family dynamics, which I'll speak on. I have a sixth grader at South and a 10th grader at Memorial. Both of my students are more than proficient in academics. Neither of my children are in organized sports, but I just wanted to be clear to the air that there's an impression out there that parents are looking for things to return normal with a focus on sports. But I can tell you that most parents I've been talking to believe in sports are important, but they're only one piece of our children's future. Here's my concern from my perspective. Like I mentioned, both of my children are academically sound. We have a stable household. We have resources to provide them with whatever they need for success. My wife stays at home and has a degree in education. Both of my children have quiet areas they can escape to for schoolwork with technology they need for success, and they are struggling. I grew up in a much more humble atmosphere. I had two working parents with multiple jobs barely enough to put on the table. I had a severe learning disability with a graduating UPI of a C minus. Even one of my parents is being a teacher, and neither of my parents believing that a school should raise a student, but I bring up both scenarios because they're very opposite, and they're both very relevant of the economic and family dynamics the Eau Claire School District is facing today. If I had everything that I had as a child, but did not have the structure of school, real school, where students are not only supposed to learn the subjects that they're there for, but they're also supposed to learn how to learn for future development. If I didn't have an outlet like sports, my idle hands, and defeated self-value, would have most likely gotten me further into trouble tarnishing my name, injuring my ability to start the life the way that I did. If I didn't get to walk the halls and learn how to face social problems, and I mean face-to-face social problems, I would have disconnected myself further from the world, which is a struggle all of us are facing with today's tech-branded children. Eau Claire School District prides itself on equality for all. It saddens me to know that we're going to be losing bright minds, the good kids are going to get lost, and a further wedge will be created between the haves and have-nots. Not that the haves are doing much success as we speak right now, but the children do not need to be a part of the political nature of this. That's what I'm going to say, the actual nature of the haves and have-nots. School districts should be equalizing, giving equal opportunity for all. From all accounts I can see, no matter how much the teachers try, which I acknowledge, and I'm friends with a lot of the From all accounts I can see, no matter how much the teachers try, which I acknowledge, and I'm friends with a lot of the teachers, they are trying and actively trying to work very hard with the tools that they're given. But it cannot create fairness in the environment that we currently have set up. If I can ask questions, I asked, I watched Mr. Johnson's WEA interview where he indicated the survey was going to go out to 11,000 people, asking for feedback on three different learning modules. But he did not indicate what the questions would be. Is the question being asked if parents would prefer to go back to four or five days a week? Are the surveys going out to the families that have already left the school district? Question I had was how did the Fall Tweak achieve something that the grand Eau Claire School District could not achieve themselves? The biggest question that I have opens the door for my closing statement. Does the board know the percentage of Eau Claire School District parents that do want to go back to four or five days a week? I get it, I got friends on both sides of the spectrum. Some people are cat people, some people are dog people. The cat people hang out with the cat people and the dog people hang out with the dog people. Both sides think that they know more than the others. They think that they're the only ones that live in their area. I hope the district that cares so much for its children and families is not intimidated by information. Please don't be scared of knowledge. Don't forget what we teach every day. Knowledge is power. If you don't already have this information, I encourage you, actually implore you to gather as much learning and findings as you can to become better representatives and better people overall. And isn't that what we all strive to do? And isn't that what we try to teach our children every day? On a side note, my daughter Kyla, with the cutest smile that you can imagine, asked me to help her to get back in school. That's all I have, unless you want to answer those questions with the remaining 23 seconds.
Thank you to all of our speakers tonight for our public forum. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Nordine, board members and executive team members and student representatives. Over the last two weeks, there continues to be plenty of activity in the district. First, I'd like to recognize our outstanding food service staff. As last week was National School Lunch Week. I'm a brief thank to the district that really appreciated the professionalism and dedication of Director Josh Gukinberg and his entire staff across the district. Thank you for all you do and the student, staff and families you serve every day. Two days ago, I participated in the first meeting of the Family Advisory Council. The first half of it was a brief introduction about our transition planning, as well as questions from the group. Afterward, we shared the opening of schools item that the executive team had presented at the board level the night before, even though it was a shortened version. Recently, I was able to join the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Fall Regional Meeting, of which Dr. Nordine was a participant as well. We were able to learn about various areas of concern at the state level, most notably legislative and financial items and future implications. I also continue to meet with the conference and area superintendents in various settings and meeting structures. We continue to share the following: our instructional models, COVID data, transition planning and lately enrollment trends. Last Tuesday, we hosted an informative initial meeting with our Parent Activities and Athletics Advisory Committee at North High. There were approximately 45 parents representing North and Memorial in preparation for the upcoming activities and athletic seasons. Our school leadership had presented and these parent representatives were able to listen to the information, ask questions, share feedback and participate in problem solving. We will continue to meet with smaller satellite and seasonal groups in the future as we get closer to those athletics and activities seasons. And we'll follow the guidance and recommendations of the City County Health Department, WIAA and Big Rivers Conference, regardless of the event or activity. We continue to meet with our Teaching and Learning Department, discussing the upcoming professional development models and flexibility for staff, as well as implementation of short and long-term improvements of our instructional model. Last week, I reached out to our student school board reps to ask for any feedback and assistance we can give for virtual model on a student level, as I had done after Emery and Zoe's comments at the last board meeting. We continue to address the concerns of underrepresented students and the inequities they face, especially in virtual learning. We provided hotspots to every family who has requested one, thanks to Jean Smartman and his department. We have provided over 130 devices to our support staff in SED and EL, soon to be 260, in order to connect directly with those students and families on their virtual platforms. We were unable to do so last spring. While getting those devices and developing our staff in the online platforms takes time, we know we will see the results soon. Even though our district and school staff text, call and email students and families who have not yet connected, we have begun to schedule home visits to ensure our students get that direct connection and keep up. The most productive way for our families or students to give feedback to us on our model is to directly, directly to the teacher or to the principal. However, we continue at all levels to navigate difficulties for staff, parents and students. I know parents will be appreciative of a survey soon that will be sent to all families about their experiences in cohort model A, B, C or D. This will help us prioritize what we must improve in our PD plans for staff as it can differ from what our administration, teachers or smaller groups of parents have experienced and shared with us. I have received some input from our student representatives earlier this evening that is very consistent, what we've heard and will, and will help us. Transition plans will be published on our website very quickly. The drafts of our plans, whether a less or more restrictive model, have been viewed by two larger groups of parents over the past couple of weeks, as well as our system leaders and teacher leaders. Ultimately, our COVID cases and quarantined students and staff have been extremely small for a district our size. This shows our instructional model and health and safety parameters have been effective and followed by our staff and students. I've also been very appreciative of the generosity and response of the community to organize, offer support and assist us in these uncertain times. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Over the last two weeks, some of my fellow board members and I have been working hard on our two board projects, the superintendent evaluation and coherent governance. Dr. Beeka and I have been meeting to develop a recommendation for the superintendent evaluation process for this year as we transition to a coherent governance model for the future. I attended the WASB-sponsored virtual seminar on superintendent evaluation on October 14. The seminar provided a great deal of information on evaluation as a whole, but also focused in parts on evaluation of a first-year superintendent. The board has been provided a link to that presentation. Dr. Beeka also met with Superintendent Johnson to collaborate on the evaluation proposal, as the evaluation proposal in general is a collaboration between the board and superintendent to both monitor progress, but also provide for growth and continuing to improve the district. We'll be working on the evaluation, as you know, tonight during our work session. Our coherent governance work is moving forward now in multiple paths. On Commissioner Zer's suggestion, I have created a workflow document that has been shared with the board and we have convened the first two of several smaller working groups to take on the task of readying these policies by the end of the school year. I would like to thank my colleagues on the board for their willingness to take on the work with me, moving the board forward in our focus on governance and monitoring of district results. The Operational Expectations Working Group met last week for the first time and the work group dedicated to amplifying voice and soliciting feedback for our district results will meet for the first time this Wednesday. And as Superintendent Johnson mentioned, he and I attended the WASB Annual Regional Meeting. And as a virtual event, it was quite different than the gatherings we've had in the past for this purpose, but it was informative, as he said, about issues facing our schools, particularly legislative and budget coming up in the next biennium. Finally, I'd like to reiterate the board's and the district's commitment to continuing to assess the situation we face with the ongoing pandemic. Superintendent Johnson just touched on this, the way that the administration is going to be reaching out to find ways to continue to improve. And I want to, as I just said, reiterate, the board is also committed to assessing the situation and is doing so constantly. It's important to remember that simply because we've come to a different conclusion than some people does not mean we're not looking at the same information. It does not mean that we are afraid of learning. We are doing the best that we can and we are looking at all of the information, including the contagion rates, including the death rates, including our health, our public health experts in that. In terms of who's making the policy, the district is making these decisions. We are doing this in the best interest of our students and we recognize that there are competing needs for our students. And we are trying the best we can to find ways to address them all. We may or may not agree on the right way to do that, but you have our commitment as a board that we will always be working to do the very best that we can. I want to close, and I'm way off script here, by saying thank you to our teachers and our administrators once again for the work that you're doing. We have put you in a very difficult position. Well, not we, but this situation has put you in a very difficult, and we also see the work that you're doing. We appreciate the work that you're doing to educate our students, to adjust to new models and to check in on them as they keep going. Thank you for that. We very, very much appreciate it. At this time, we will transition to our student representatives' reports. And tonight, we'll start with our representative from North High, Zoe Wolf.
Hello. Hello, everyone. I hope you are having a wonderful evening. In my last report, I gave an update on how the blended model for learning is going and not much has changed since then. The main issue that has continued on since the beginning of the year is lack of direction through Canvas. There are major differences between the class structures in Canvas and how to access assignments. This makes it difficult to understand the content behind assignments when we are only worried about getting the assignments in. The online portion of our education is lacking communication for the blended and virtual model. Since the last meeting, I was able to get in contact with a senior at North doing completely virtual, which she stated. Most of my teachers have a pretty good routine going. I'd say the biggest struggle is that some teachers just aren't good at Canvas and doing AP classes through Apex is also challenging, end quote. I have also noticed that teachers have settled down to a routine, which makes classes much easier to understand. It seems that online has become more organized, which is good to see considering the rough start they had at the beginning of the year. Overall, there haven't been many changes to the issues I stated at the previous meeting, but everyone is adjusting to the new format of education. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our representative from Memorial High, Emory Tool.
Hi, can you all hear me?
You can.
Awesome. I hope you're all doing well. I have a ver, I have very little to report tonight. The hybrid model is continuing basically as it has been since the start of school. Those in the all-virtual model are continuing to settle in, as well as their teachers. There's still a pretty strong sense of dislike for Apex, but students that have actual ECSD classes seem pretty content. As far as both models go, my only big comment is that I think some standardization of how teachers are using Canvas may be helpful, especially at the K through eight level, but still at the high school level. Basically, every teacher is using Canvas in a different way and it makes it difficult for students, even those who are normally strong students, to find their work. This is, of course, less of an issue at the high school level because by that age, students are better at managing it. But for younger students, many of whom are home all day with no parents, it's much more difficult to manage their work because there is no standard way to find and complete it. And that is all I have tonight.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our board committee reports. We start, as always, with Budget Development, Commissioner Harder.
Thank you, good evening. Yeah, Budget Development did meet briefly last week to discuss questions about the renewal of the district transportation contract, particularly questions about how best to deal with extended closures and as we've seen with last semester with, due to COVID. Trying to get that, those questions put away and also in particular because of what's coming up next week, I'll just remind the board, which is the special session for the budget adoption. And so those are all related, but that's, that's my update for this week.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. We'll go next to demographic trends and facilities planning, Kim Kohler.
Evening. The Demo Trends Group met last week and finalized our preparations for an upcoming presentation to the board, which will include a look at current enrollment, as well as potentially a study for applied population status.
Thank you. Next up is LEAP, Jim Schmidt.
Yeah, last week, the LEAP committee met and saw the first version of a video for innovation that will be shared both internally and externally. And then they also looked at the communication plan for the Arctic Zone and saw the initial drafts and how that's going to start rolling out later this month.
Thank you. Policy and Governance met Thursday, October 8. We once again discussed Policy 343, which is about the equitable multi-level system of supports that's replacing our educational groupings policy. You've heard about it, as I said, for many meetings. Jim Schmidt has revised the policy after that meeting based on our discussion and returned it to P&amp;G members for final changes before our upcoming meeting on Thursday. Our goal for that meeting is to approve the policy for a first reading with the full board by our November 2 meeting. Committee members were also provided a sample equity statement that we are working on to formally express the board's commitment to the work we are doing on anti-racism, anti-bias and increasing equity. We will look at a draft of that statement on Thursday as well and bring it to the full board for consideration when we need it. We also continued our discussion defining the work to be done in altering the hiring, retention and support policies and practice in our district. Dr. Johnson is going to provide some sample language and other information from his work at the university. And we will be looking for ways that the committee can support in policy the types of changes we'd like to see in this area. Our next meeting for P&amp;G is this Thursday at 1 PM. We'll now turn to the legislative updates. Dr. Johnson.
On Thursday, October 15, the Department of Public Instruction posted state general school aids for school districts will receive during this current school year. The information published includes certified general school aid amounts for each school district, as well as 2020, 21 student enrollment numbers for independent charter schools and private schools participating in state parental choice programs. For Eau Claire, it was 66,664,242 bucks. That was a positive increase of 5.61%. Governor Evers' mask mandate was upheld in Wisconsin for the time being. A total of 51 local school district referendum questions in 41 school districts will be before voters when they go to the polls on November 3. 21 of the 51 ballot questions request permission to issue debt for construction of new facilities or the maintenance or remodeling of existing school facilities. Overall, voters will be asked to approve nearly 927 million in borrowing for these projects. The largest asks are from Madison, Wausau and Oshkosh, comprising 62% of the requested amount total. The US Department of Labor issues revised regulations for the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, leave provisions, and then the Equal Opportunity Commission continues to issue updates as it relates to COVID-19 guidance. The DPI has initiated rulemaking changes to Chapter PI 34, the Administrative Rules Chapter relating to teacher licensing. The department is referring to these changes as licensing flexibilities during a pandemic declaration. In its scoped statement, the objective of the proposed rule is to amend PI 34 in order to create licensing flexibilities to address staffing needs in school districts and to help school districts ensure continuity of services during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. The board considers approval of the consent agenda as a single vote with no discussion. Board members have been provided background material or have discussed it at a previous meeting. This is acted on with one vote. If a board member wishes to discuss any item, it can be pulled from the consent agenda to be voted on separately. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of October 5, 2020, gifts in the amount of $159,655.15 for the period of September 1, 2020, through September 30, 2020, payment of all bills in the amount of $7,588,864.18 and net payroll in the amount of $3,445,280.61 for the period of September 1, 2020, through September 30, 2020, human resources employment report, proposed policy 860, visitors to the schools. I would hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeka?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I will give the floor to Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening. I wish to inform the board of an organizational structural change I have made to benefit our system. I would like to announce my shift of the two positions of the Director of Special Education and Director of Student Services to the executive team level. The two employees in those positions are Mandy Van Vliet and Dr. Kayin Jean. The main rationale are as follows. First, in my experience in smaller and larger districts, the superintendent is the direct supervisor of these critical departments. I have found few similar-sized or smaller districts where the special education director is not supervised by the superintendent. Student Services is sometimes known as Community Education Minnesota and sometimes in Wisconsin at times as Pupil Services. As there are many As there are many functions with outside organizations and partnerships, again, in many larger and smaller districts, the superintendent supervises this position. Secondly, this flattens the organization, allowing others and me to gain knowledge and communication, information, and leadership of these departments and positions in our daily work. I have been pleased thus far with flattening the organization with our weekly systems leader structure of forty-five staff in the Oak Claire Area School District. We have not implemented the cabinet structure as often as I would like, and that will occur soon. Thirdly, these are departments that are vital to the overall success of the district as well as critical to my own success and board goals. I must directly supervise them. Both departments serve underrepresented groups of students. I have not experienced a district where special education was not supervised by the superintendent. The community partnership and equity components for student services, especially the relationship between the Oak Claire Area School District and the Oak Claire City County Health Department are too important not to be at the executive team table. Finally, these critical departments and directors are presently under the supervision of teaching and learning. Effective Wednesday morning, I will directly supervise them, and I look forward to our progress in strengthening our organization. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I can speak for the board in saying we are excited about the impact that Dr. Zhang and Ms. Van Vliet are going to have in their new positions. Uh, we already know the great work that they've done for the district thus far. So, welcome to the new seats, and we look forward to seeing what comes out of them. At this time, we will adjourn to committee. We have two committee reports tonight. The first is from Kay Marks on substitute pay.
Thank you. Um, so each year, the administration goes through a process where we um, will survey all of the area school districts to determine what their substitute wages are and determine where ECASD falls into comparisons. Um, for the past several years, um, the district has, our district has been at the top um, one or two positions related to all areas of substitute pay. And um, this is the first year in which uh, that has changed, which has led us to bring substitute wages to the board for um, a potential increase. So if we could look at that first slide, please. What I'm gonna be showing the board is um, the current wages for each of these areas as well as what we're proposing our wages move to. Um, obviously, it's not gonna be a surprise to anybody that uh, area districts have changed their rates as a result of um, the pandemic and uh, the nationwide sub shortage, which we've seen for the past several years. And the pandemic has obviously just made that uh, situation uh, more dire for our schools. So each one of the charts that you'll see before you will have our school district in the darker highlighted blue in terms of where we're currently at. And then the lighter highlighted blue with the word proposed behind it would be obviously what we're looking to move that rate to. So in this first grid, um, the grid on the left will show the teacher daily sub rate as it currently stands at a hundred and ten dollars and forty cents. What we're proposing to move it to would be um, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. You can see that that would put us at the top of the area districts. Um, all of these districts are then going to be right around the thirty, thirty or a thirty-minute drive from um, the Oak Claire Area School District, right around that ballpark. The second one is going to be our long-term teacher rate. So uh, in our school district, there's two different rates, one based upon um, whether or not that substitute has a bachelor's degree or a master's degree. So the bachelor's current rate is two oh one forty-eight and the current master's rate is two thirty-two eighty-eight. And you can see that we're proposing to that to the top, which would give us the two twenty-four for bachelor, the two forty-five for masters. What that actually does is it um, moves that to the current Level A of our salary schedule. Um, the previous or our current rate is off of um, Level C of several um, salary schedules ago prior to our modified 2016 compensation model. Uh, next slide, please. Looking at support staff, we have two different positions here. Um, grouping it into general school assistants or GSA is we're currently at eleven nineteen um, for the day-to-day rate and thirteen thirty-four for the long-term rate. We would look to move that to twelve dollars for day-to-day and thirteen sixty-nine for hourly, I'm sorry, for long-term. And then for our special education assistants, um, we're currently at eleven forty-nine for the day-to-day and fourteen sixty-seven for long-term. And we would look to move that to fourteen dollars for day-to-day and fifteen oh two for long-term. Next slide. Our custodial rates, uh, there is no long-term sub for custodial rates. It's just one rate for day-to-day. Uh, you can see that in this slide, there's multiple school districts where we have several asterisks. Those districts um, did not have any rates provided um, on their website. When we reached out to them numerous times for information, uh, they just simply did not get back to us for several weeks, so there is no information to share. However, uh, Colfax did respond and they do not have a rate um, for substitutes. Uh, they just simply have their current employees work more and pay them overtime. So uh, I don't believe that they have custodial subs in their district. Um, at least that was the information we were providing. Again, an area that we have a hard time finding subs, so uh, we'd be looking to go from our current rate of eleven eighty-seven um, to the top of the chart there where you see a daily rate of fourteen dollars an hour. Next slide, please. Um, overall, the anticipated increase to the budget, and these would be um, approximate based upon the highest end of what we would anticipate would be for the daily rates. You can see that the totals there would be, again, kind of in a worst-case scenario, ninety-one thousand, uh, one hundred dollars. Long-term would be a hundred and forty-seven thousand, um, for a total of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, again, that's assuming that this is based upon last year's numbers um, and the amount of accesses. Obviously, this year we have some other things put into place, but we needed to have some type of a measurement to be able to compare it to. So we use last year's uh, last year's days and um, this year I think that we would find that to be much less, uh, simply because of the in-house modifications that we're using this year. Next slide. Any questions I could currently answer for the board, uh, other than we would hope that the board would be able to entertain a potential um, vote on this at the next board meeting so that we could uh, put this into place. If the board were to choose to approve this, we could put it into place as soon as possible.
Thank you, Kay. Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, thanks, Kit, for that information. That seems like a timely uh, proposal from my point of view. We certainly uh, need to do what we can to attract subs. So do you, my question was, do you think in the projected um, increase of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, do you anticipate that will be, assuming this change is approved, that we'll be able to actually fill that that full capacity to use that full amount? Or do you think that'll be a struggle? Do you have a sense?
Yep. Um, I think you're, if I understand your question, um, I think your question, your question would is would we actually um, be able to utilize the full amount of money that we're, we would be budgeting in that case?
Find enough subs, basically, yeah.
Yeah, I think even with the increased rates, um, I think that we'll see um, we'll see a better um, probability of filling vacancies, uh, but I don't think that we'll be, that we would be able to meet the full need, but I think that it'll be a greater probability that we'd be able to see that. But not to the extent that um, that we would need to fill every vacancy, but certainly it would help to be able to get us much closer to that.
Yeah, clearly. That makes sense. Thank you.
Dr. Bika?
Uh, I guess I, I just want to express thanks uh, to Ms. Marks for this work. And also uh, do you know, a commitment to uh, revisiting these data again, uh, if in the middle of the year, in the middle of a quarter, uh, just that you would come back with more information if the, if the demographics change.
Absolutely.
Seeing no other comments or questions, I wonder if it's all right with everybody if we go, if we put this on the agenda next time as a consent item? And not hearing any objections and seeing at least one thumbs up, uh, and a nod or two, uh, then we'll go ahead and do that. Thank you, Kay. We'll have that as a consent item for next meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Our next committee report is the professional development and equity update.
Good evening. I'm uh, I'm be joined tonight toward the end of the presentation by four principals that will share a perspective from the building, uh, professional development and our equity efforts this year. Um, but I'd like to begin first with the, in this presentation to discuss about several years ago, our systems assessment told us that we had a long history of multiple initiatives. And after a few years of seeing those initiatives go by the wayside, we needed a more sustainable approach, and our current approach has similarities to past years, which uses professional learning communities to drive, drive the work within the context of an equitable, multi-level system of supports. It also has differences, which includes a focus on choice within our priorities. And the district's disproportionality designation still exists. Added to that is a significant disruption, and you heard about it at the beginning of this meeting, that has occurred both to our students' education and their lives overall. This year, our situation requires that we bring a special focus to ensuring equity for all students and supporting their social and emotional learning, which again was a theme uh, in our first speaker, uh, during the beginning session at seven o'clock. Professional learning does look different this year in some ways. We've had more opportunities on a regular schedule with most of that learning being delivered virtually. This predictability allows us to be intentional and to focus on priorities that are important for our students. See if this will advance. There we go. Um, we've seen this slide before, and actually last year, I'm very excited the fact that um, last year, the first four votes were highlighted, and now all five votes are highlighted. Uh, professional learning addresses um, most of the strategic planning components in the traditional year. And you'll hear tonight a focus on academic and social-emotional learning and all those collaborative cultures that I mentioned on the last slide are mechanisms to, to building a high-quality staff. This year, we've also added partnerships with families and communities to this slide. We have had several sections about partnering with families through our partnerships with Better Lesson, Dell Computers, and Advanced Learning Partnerships. We are including this more intentionally in our professional development than in the past. Our professional learning site is robust and evolves weekly and sometimes daily. If you go there once each week, it'll look different. Um, this is a dynamic site, which allows us to be nimble in addressing our staff's needs. The site is internal. Um, it can be reached by starting with the district's URL and then putting a slash PD. From there, you'll find a launching link to the site. And again, that site is only available to those with school district email addresses. Tomorrow, we'll roll out MyPD to all staff. We've already done uh, initial rollout with this to our system leaders and also to the association last week, along with the teaching and learning staff um, who have edited as well. So let's look at the elements. MyPD focuses on research-based models. One of the strongest and most succinct is from the Aspen Institute, and you've heard of them from the coherent governance work. It should not surprise us that they are also a leader in professional learning. Key elements from this model include a focus on teaching rigorous content to deep levels, a focus on high-quality materials in student academic and social-emotional learning that drives teacher learning. Recognizing that school is where teacher, teacher learning happens and facilitated by teacher leaders and differentiation of that learning. And then in terms of equity, it is difficult to articulate this focus better than quoting the Aspen Institute themselves. And I quote, "Professional learning systems intentionally address equity by improving instruction in every classroom across the system and by ensuring teachers develop the ability to adapt curriculum and instructional materials to meet all students' needs in culturally affirming and sustaining ways." Predictability in the multi-level system of support creates positive culture and is important to delivering professional learning. The schedule this year allows for that, and the pattern for learning is on a monthly schedule. The first week of each month is school-based learning. It's coordinated by the principal. And again, you'll hear more about that in just a few moments. The second week focuses on essential learning overviews and district teamwork. District leadership includes such groups such as occupational therapists, physical therapists, elementary music teachers, elementary art teachers, speech and language pathologists, and so on. The third and fourth weeks allow teacher choice to meet their needs and the needs of building and the district, of their building in the district, but within the priorities that I'll share soon. On the priority slide, you may have noticed different strands, and those strands are based on the district's equitable, multi-level system of support. As if you look at, you could really zoom in, um, that first row of buttons, the five, they are collaboration, guarantee a viable curriculum, high-quality instruction, balanced assessment, and family engagement. And again, these same items you see resonate also within your strategic plan. We need a mechanism for staff to track their learning, and to do this, we focus on three major areas. Personal goals, which is the first part of MyPD, and the, and this is tied in with the supervision process. So last week, or two weeks ago, when you approved the waiver for the educator effectiveness model, the focus now is on student or uh, each staff member having two goals. And so we've tied that into the professional development process to synthesize that for our staff. The second is to focus on building school improvement plans. And the fourth is district expectation, which again allows choice within a group of options that are focused around our priority, our part, the priority areas that we're gonna talk about next. So the district learning expectations uh, really include a focus around equity, focus around social-emotional learning, preparing for technology or, or continuing to enhance our technology skills. Uh, and one of those is to facilitate the family teacher conferences. And when we approved the new calendar, we also approved doing conferences virtually. Um, that is a different landscape for our staff. We need to prepare for that. I'm also continuing to leverage Microsoft Teams and Seesaw and Canvas, which you again heard also from our students. And then, of course, um, these trainings will allow us to facilitate the learning of our students. It positions us to effectively lead the virtual learning. We need, in the event that we need to close school or the district for their health reasons or inclement weather. And then finally, job-specific training, such as facilitating state testing, DEIS coaches need to be trained. Um, if you have a new curriculum in your area, you need training, 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 and so forth. We deliver this through a variety of means, and such as we, uh, new to our district is pop-up PD. Typically thirty-minute or less sessions that really focus on a very small number of how-to topics. These sessions are designed to quickly meet the needs that pop up for staff. And we've used these not just with teachers, we've used them in our administration building as well to try and build skills of our staff. We also have one- and two-hour sessions, which are more traditional. Um, we have collective inquiry, which is the basis of professional learning communities, where the focus is on using data and collaboration. Uh, we are beginning to uh, start the process of peer virtual visits, uh, where the focus is on instructional practice and exposing the practice and making it less private. Coaching, which is critical to moving to new learning habits, and implementation science tells us that coaching is critical to making teacher learning stick. Whereas many of our coaches have been repurposed, but we are finding other ways to provide coaching in this environment. Professional reading, which can be facilitated through reflective protocols and independent professional learning, such as for pursuing advanced degrees and national boards and mentor training, et cetera. So that is all part of MyD, MyPD. And by the way, MyPD is not something we're purchasing. It is something that we are building. So that's our own, we should probably toss a little trademark on there and copyright. Um, the professional learning shifts that we're seeing through this work is we are, our school leadership teams are evolving into instructional leadership teams that drive learning in a building. So at the district level, we're developing district-wide teams to support building-based teams. And this team will be represented by each building. Then at the school level, these teams drive learning in their buildings and are guided by the district team and content-specific teams. The school teams also inform district work. An instructional leadership team at a school level coordinates the work of our professional learning communities to swallow in that building. And finally, content-specific teams, and we've used these teams to lead English Language Arts work, math work, social-emotional learning committee, and more. And members of these teams are also on the district and building teams. So we have choice boards, and these allow for choice for staff within those priorities I mentioned, and allows autonomy and a level of self-direct and direction of learning. This impacts all work by all work groups, not only teachers. And we're continuing to develop learning models for all staff, including our hourly staff. And in the future, we will be dashboard-driven, where we have, we've adopted an online learning management system that will allow staff to do this electronically and have their own personal dashboards to monitor their progress and goals and to serve as a conduit for conversations with their principals. And actually, the kickoff meeting for that actually took place today. I've stated earlier that we use professional learning communities to advance this work, and you'll see the strategic plan for the, for the district reflected as well. The three big ideas in professional learning communities are that collaborative culture, where collaborative teams are the fundamental building block of an organization and is the engine that really does drive the work. A focus on learning, the very essence of a learning community is a focus on, and a commitment to the learning of each student. And finally, the results orientation. All of our efforts are assessed on the basis of results rather than intentions. This is a slide we shared last year, and it is very appropriate still today. The work of our teachers and administration of the district is centered around becoming a high-function professional learning communities. Prior to, two years ago, we studied professional learning communities, what they were, how they work, how they benefit students. We analyzed our own practices and identified areas of celebration and other areas for growth. And from there, we came to understand that becoming a high-functioning professional learning community was a journey and one that we wanted to take together. In 2018, 19, principals committed to growing professional learning communities in our schools. And a principal, we engaged in learning around two, and two of the big ideas, a focus on learning and culture of collaboration. You can see here what we studied and what principals committed to embedded into each of our schools. Last year, we continued that learning and tackled the third big idea, maintaining a results orientation. Again, principals were engaging in learning that you see here, and each principal developed a plan to help their school get from where they are to where they want to be. And we know last year and the start of this year had significant disruptions, and yet it's vital, and yet it is vital that we continue doing what we call the right work. Like all journeys, this will take time, and our administrative team is collaborative and focused on learning and results orientation. We have several principals, as I mentioned earlier here tonight, to share their work. So we're going to begin first with Heidi White, who is both the director of early learning and leads the Prairie Ridge Early Learning School, to talk to her, to talk to us about their professional learning journey.
Hello, everyone from Early Learning. I'm happy to be here tonight to talk to you on behalf of all of the dedicated, hard-working, early-learning professionals in this district. And I wanted to talk to you specifically about two pieces of professional learning that we have been working on over the past few years. And what ties both of these pieces together is really our journey and our study of the early brain. So what we want to do at the early learning level is look specifically and implement specific strategies to help support optimal brain development, so we can build strong, healthy brains at this level, and that will maximize that learning in the future. So one of the first things that I want to talk to you about is something that I'm very passionate, and our group is very passionate about, and that's conscious discipline. So at the early learning level, socially-emotional learning is the foundation of our work. It is in, it's woven into every single thing that we do. So we've been on a journey of really transforming how we view discipline as a group and really taking a look personally and professionally at our mindset and creating a shift. So the beautiful part of conscious discipline is that it's really, it talks about the adult first and the child second. So we, as the adults in front of our kids, we need to make sure that we are in the right parts of our brain, because we cannot teach what we don't possess. And so we are really working on our journey as adults. And the part of the brain research for conscious discipline, if you look at the very bottom of the pyramid, it talks about the brain state model. So we talked specifically about three states of the brain. The survival state, which is the brain stem, the lowest part of the brain. The emotional state, which is the limbic system. And then the prefrontal cortex, which is the executive state. And so when you think about our journey as adults, you know, a lot of times, discipline focuses always on the child. But the adult has the ability to either support that child's journey to self-regulation or can really hinder that child's journey to self-regulation. So just let me give you an example. A teacher or an adult in a classroom that's in a survival state, if a child is disrupting during a lesson, an adult in their survival state will say that, or think that that's a threat to their authority. And they, they will think that that child is just being disrespectful. Okay? A teacher in an emotional state with that very same child might say, "I've built this relationship with you. You know, if you loved me, you would just be quiet and listen." Right? And then when both survival and emotional states are unconscious. So in our journey with conscious discipline, we're really working on becoming conscious. So that means that we are functioning within our executive state so that we can begin to look at behavior differently. We can begin to look at that child who is disrupting during that time as maybe having a missing skill that we can teach and support, or as a call for help. Something is not right. That child maybe needs some, you know, different seating, might need some different supports at that time. So it's not just about looking at the behavior, it's about looking at our adult response. And so the next level of that, of that pyramid is really the seven powers for conscious adults. And that has helped us with our transformation. And that's something that throughout this year, we are going to be revisiting each of those powers, because it's so critical with all the things going on in our world, because we want to be our best selves in front of our kids. The next level is really creating that school-family, and that's really building the culture and climate of the school so that each child feels safe, number one, most important, and then second, connected and loved within that building. And then the level right to the top is the seven skills of discipline. So that's the actual SEL or socially-emotional learning content that is taught with kids and practiced with kids through, for us, through their play and through specific lessons. And hopefully, all of those things will equal success. So when we know about those three stages of the brain, we can provide just right strategies for challenging behaviors. And that's a continuous work in progress. We're always looking to find, you know, the best strategies and methods to support that child on their journey of self-regulation. Right now, we're in the process of looking at all our plan for all three tiers of support within the early learning level and really looking at that through an equity lens. We have been very fortunate in the Oakley School District that we have been able to receive professional development and coaching from a model instructor of conscious discipline. Her name is Jill Moley. She's been to our program many times to provide professional development, but she's also provided coaching. And last October was her second round of coaching at Prairie Ridge. And in our report, she deemed us a model implementation site for conscious discipline based on her observations and what she saw and the fact that we have really made that mindset shift and are beginning to look at discipline a little bit differently. So that's, that's one big part of our professional development over the last couple of years. And Jim, if you would change to the next one.
Right up there. There we go.
Thank you. The other piece that connects that, that brain, that journey of the brain is a program called SMART. So that stands for stimulating maturity through accelerated readiness training. I know that's a mouthful, but really, basically, this is a brain stimulation program. And we're really working to put inputs into the brain. And we're not looking at readiness skills for academics. We're looking at learning readiness skills, which are prerequisites to those academic skills. And we looked at this a few years ago, when our data was showing that, you know, engagement of boys was tough, and we were looking at ways to provide more movement within our day. And so SMART says that bodies need to move in order to learn how to be still. And so that's a part of our work every single day is movement. And it's movement that, you know, you wouldn't think would be movement, but it's walking on a balance scheme. It's doing the old-fashioned alligator crawls. It's, you know, spinning and doing some different things that, that input different parts of the brain and talked about a lot about how movement anchors learning. So, so when we think about what I just talked about with conscious discipline, and we start to look at behavior differently, some behaviors are the result of a weak midbrain. And so that's that, those lower centers of the brain that are, remember I told you, were unconscious. So to give you an example, for a child, let's say that's, you know, in an upper grade and is learning about reading, they have to have automatic functions of eye movements. So eye movements that start on one side and go smoothly across the page. They also have to have balance and body coordination to be able to sit in their chair, sit upright, and be able to do their work. And then they also have to have auditory discrimination as well to, you know, discriminate those different sounds. So if any of those things are not automatic, they have to be done by the cortex. And so when you think about the midbrain, the midbrain is really a multitasker. It can do many things at once, but the cortex is really a unitasker. It can do only one thing. So we want to make sure all of those processes in the lower parts of the brain are automatic so that we can save the cortex for all of that higher-level learning comprehension, accessing executive skills, all of those higher-level pieces of learning that we want kids to do. So we have been fortunate enough to have received coaching and training for all of our pre-K staff. And Prairie Ridge staff are on their second year of coaching, and community site staff for EC4T are, are beginning their first year. But the most exciting thing about this is that it's expanded. And so we have kindergarten teachers, some kindergarten teachers trained, first and second-grade teachers, special education, occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, general school assistants. Lots of people are being trained and then coached with this model. And our plan is to hopefully get all of those pre-K through second-grade staff trained. And we want to, through our coaching process, we don't want SMART to be what we teach, but we want it to become how we teach. And we want to make sure that we are implementing and making sure that we are using those lower level, and we want those to just become automatic. So it's been a really, really fun and exciting journey. Lots of support from Jim and the principals on implementing SMART. So we're excited to continue this journey and, and see the results and achievement that it should bring with it.
Thanks, Heidi. And for those of you that are able to make a visit either to Prairie Ridge or one of our elementary schools using SMART, it is actually, can be implemented also in a COVID environment. And so that part of that coaching is helping staff understand how that's being done. And if Heidi was here in person, you would all be doing this for a few minutes to practice. But because they're all isolated from one another, that's not going to be possible tonight. Our next speaker is going to be Jake Donzie, and I feel like, I'm not always sure, you know, if you had a chance to watch Jake and how he leads learning on Facebook posts, they're just really exciting. And Jake is also does a wonderful job of leading professional development in his school. And so I'm going to give Jake an opportunity to talk about how this works at Robbins.
All right. Thank you so much for that opportunity to share today. I've been really impressed with the elementary students and the staff, really across the district, just the flexibility and the patience that everybody's been handling so far. It's, it's been a difficult year and tricky one, but I think navigating okay at the elementary level. I'm going to build on a lot of the themes that Heidi just talked about. Heidi shared that with us last year, the conscious discipline ideas. And I think a lot of what we're doing at Robbins right now is building a lot off of that. You'll see a lot of the same themes that we talk about today. Little did we know that as we were talking on our social emotional learning committee, and we were narrowing down what we wanted to really focus on, that we'd end up with relationships, empathy, and perseverance, and how important those would be for our students and our staff right now. So we're focusing on that right now with our professional development. And the way we're focusing on that is through some research that Dr. Ross Green has done. There's a lot of cloud during a pandemic, but one of the silver linings is that everybody can be involved in our Wednesday collaborative time. Usually, it would be Wednesday TV that we have after school. It's usually mostly our certified staff. And this year has really given us an opportunity to really dig in with everybody, the entire staff, which is seventy-some people at Robbins. So we've, we've really had the opportunity to share the same message with everybody, which has really been fantastic. Kids have been away from school, or continue to be away from school. So we figured we're going to have some challenging behaviors to start, just as kids adjust to the structure as adults are kind of handling all the pressures that are going on right now. So we wanted to start with that kind of focus. So we've been looking at Ross Green, and I was a big fan of Ross Green from the past. He's written books like The Explosive Child and Lost at School that really, that really look at this holistic view of a student and why they may act the way they act, and those that get frustrated and those who are anxious, and what we can do as adults to help them. So one of the big focuses we're working on right now as a staff is looking at the idea that kids do well if they can. So historically, sometimes if a kid misbehaves and not behaviorally appropriate, let's say in a class, we might either use rewards like, hey, stickers or, or some sort of reward if, if they do the right thing, assuming that they're not motivated to do well, that kids, that they're lacking this motivation. So if I only could reward them, or if they don't do well, I'm going to give them a consequence. And there are all sorts of huge lists of consequences, right, that we give to kids for not doing well. But that's under the assumption that a kid's not motivated to do well. And the fact is, kids do well if they can. Kids want to come to school to do well. They aren't coming to be a disruption. Often, the disruption comes because their frustration tolerance is pretty low, or they don't know how to handle not being first in line, or not being successful all the time, or struggling in a subject, that type of thing. So what we talked about just a couple Wednesdays ago was the idea that kids will do well at the end, do well if they can. And instead of it being a lack of motivation, it's really a lack of skill. And we need to be willing to teach that skill, teach them how to handle frustration, teach them how to, how to handle their anxiety, or if things don't go well all the time. That's an important role of the adults at the school. So an example of that, that we talked about was, let's say I'm backing up a trailer at a boat landing, and there are a lot of people all watching me, and my whole family's in the vehicle with me. And they all say to me, "Hey, Jake, if you do well, we'll go out for ice cream." Like, if you can back this boat into the water really quickly and well, safely, we'll go out for ice cream. Or they can all say, "We're going to make fun of you if you can't do this really well." The fact is that I'm motivated plenty to back up that boat into the water. It's not a lack of motivation that is my struggle. Right? At this point, it's, it's, I'm embarrassed because things aren't going well, that type of thing. So it's really a lack of skill. So what I need is more skills. I don't need more rewards or consequences at that point. I need a skill set that'll help me do that. And I think a lot of students are in that same situation when we see behaviors come up during that time. So we spent time listening to some Ross Green presentations and then discussing in small groups. Teens gave us a lot of opportunity to meet in small groups. And as a large group, we had an exit ticket for everybody, and it was really neat to see everybody's comments and kind of the takeaway that everybody had, that, that it kind of flips your perspective a little bit, that, you know what, when a kid struggles with reading, when a kid struggles with math, we're, we're usually very empathetic, and we want to help them. But sometimes with behavior, we react like, "Oh, hey, kid, you're trying to mess with me," kind of a thing, when really, it's a call for help in the same way, much as what Heidi was saying. Like, we need to think about, as adults, how should we react to that? And what's the best way to teach those skills for a kid moving forward? So yeah, we're going to continue to revisit that in the next couple months, and we're excited about it. So, so far, so good, and we're off to a good start. Thanks for your time. And now it's to Michelle, I think.
So thanks, Jake. So I really appreciate the first two principals talking about the socially-emotional learning. And as Michelle may give her a little transition time to get ready and queued up. I first met Michelle when she was doing some part-time work in teaching and learning several years ago. And she's been at the, really working on the professional development as an assistant principal at DeLonge for many years, and now has the opportunity to lead it as the principal. So I'm going to have Michelle Oivert share the story at DeLonge.
Well, thanks, Jim. At DeLonge, we started out the year, and we actually started out last year taking a look at saying, "What is our, what does our focus need to be?" And the reason we have our focus on patience, flexibility, and positivity. And it might be like, "Why would we choose that?" Well, what we really need to do is, we're in a totally different situation than what we've ever been in. And so we talked as a staff and said, "We need to be able to be patient with ourselves, and we need to teach students to be patient with themselves, because we're in a whole new, new era and that we're not going to just get things right away." We have to be flexible, because you know- We have to be flexible, because you never know what's going to happen, and how can we adapt, and how can we adjust and move forward? And then most importantly, how do we continue to stay positive in a time when it's very easy to get really negative, to kind of get down and, oh man, this just really stinks, and it's not what it used to be, and so on. And so one of the things that we did to start the year, as we looked at how do we start our professional development, is we showed the video, the backwards bicycle. And if you've not had the opportunity to take a look at it, I would recommend you just look on YouTube and type in backwards bicycle. And what it does is it takes a look at your brain getting gets wired to do certain things, especially ride a bicycle. So you've heard, you know, once you learn how to ride a bike, you won't forget. Well, with this, it was an engineer, and he made the bicycle so it, when you turned one way, you actually went the opposite. Anyway, and it took a really long time to learn how to do that, because you always wanted to go back to the old way. And so one of the things that we're focusing on this year is, how do we continue to move forward and learn how to ride a bicycle a new way? If you continue to try and do what you've always done in a system that isn't set up for that, you're going to keep falling over. And so we're really working on helping our kids, as well as our staff, kind of move forward and kind of rewire our brain, so to speak, to say, how do we do things differently instead of trying to do what we've always done in a new system, because that doesn't always work? And so with our professional development, I would agree with Jake, that one of the things that has really been great is the collaboration, and especially across the three middle schools. When you take a look at all the different content areas, staff have been working harder, I think, than than ever before, to try and make sure that things are aligned and they're in sync and they're on pace. And we have all these new curriculums, we have ELA, we have math, and staff are just, they're asking for more time to collaborate, to make sure that they're on the same page. So I think those pieces of professional development have been amazing, and it's nice because things are kind of lined up. When you take a look at the schedule that Jim shared, so that staff know, okay, this is when we can work on here, but we can also work together more. And they are during their time, when they get that time individually, they're taking that time to say, hey, can we get together and let's look at these lessons? Let's take a look at our assessments and see, how do we adjust to make them better? As a building, one of the things that we did also was, was we took a look, and we got feedback from staff, but we also got feedback from students. And I've heard a bit of it at the, in our meeting today with Canvas, and how do we make it so that it's more aligned, so that it's easier to work through? And so what we've done is, we have a technology committee at DeLong, and that committee's gone through and looked to say, okay, how can we continue to improve? It's not perfect, but how do we look to give staff the skills that they need with the technology platforms that we're using, so that they can be successful, and so that our students can be successful? And families are feeling like, okay, yeah, I'm getting this, and then we can continue to work together as a team. So what we've done is, we listened to staff, and they said, we need some more help with some of this. So on Tuesdays after school, members of our technology team will stay after, and then anyone from our staff who would like to get more help on Canvas, and how do we set up our page so that it's the same across the building? Or how do I set up this module? Or when we take a look at the teams, how can I set this up so that it's most beneficial for the virtual learning that comes? So people are staying after to do those types of things. Professional development during the day, on those Wednesdays, when we have a chunk of time that's for the building, we've done similar pop-up sessions where staff are teaching staff, the different sessions, so that if we do go 100% virtual, our staff are ready and feeling like, okay, I know I have this. They also know that they have a support system within the building that they can go to and ask if they need something. So the nice part is, is we have staff that are teaching in person, as well as those that are teaching 100% virtual. And we have the staff that are 100% virtual saying, hey, these are the things that you need to know, so that you can be the best teacher possible if we go 100% virtual. So those have been a huge success, and I appreciate our staff that are willing to say, no, I'll be on that team, and how can I help out my colleagues, as well as listening and saying, okay, this is what we need. Because one of the things I really feel strongly about is that when we try new things, we have to give staff the professional development to be able to do it well, and not just say, okay, here you go, get going. And so we're trying to look and say, how can we do this better? The other thing that we're doing is trying to see is, how can we infuse a variety of instructional strategies to our different learning environments? So what we try to do is model different strategies within our meetings. So when we have a virtual meeting like we're doing now, we'll try and model some different strategies that would be engaging, that then they can carry over into their classrooms. When we're able to meet in person, we'll do different strategies, and then also acknowledge and say, okay, this is why we're doing what we're doing, and this is how you could do this in your classroom, encouraging staff to try those out. And it's not just myself modeling those, it's having other staff come up and model them, and then explain how they use them in their classroom. So a great example of that is, one of our staff members is on quarantine, and she is teaching from home, but to her class here at school, and will have an adult in the classroom for supervision. And so keeping socially distance and things, but giving other staff members an opportunity to come in and observe and see how this is being done, so that if someone else is on quarantine, they can look and say, oh, okay, this is how I can do this. So that we're hoping to prepare our staff if things occur that way. So I think that's it. I think Dave, you're up.
Thanks Dave Oldenburg will bring us to the last one again. Dave, like Michelle, has a past history with teaching and learning. And Dave will be our last principal to share the story of professional development at the high school level and our journey from pre-K through grade 12. Dave?
All right, thanks Jim. At Memorial and at both high schools, what is new for us this year is having dedicated time within the instructional day, or instructors at a grade level or department level, to practice professional learning communities, and then work on the essential learning outcomes embedded during the school day. And that's a new reform for high schools. Staff have two to three hours of time on Wednesdays to be able to work in grade level department and department level meetings, to be able to build those essential learning outcomes, to plan the assessment calendar and the pacing guide for the week, and then, most importantly, react to formative and summative data from students, from assessments that are given in that assessment guideline or that plan for the week, and then react to the data to share results within our mentor, within the grade level. So we know that's all work supported by Rook de Forest's legendary work, and supported by Solution Tree, which teaching and learning and Jim has helped us consult with different Solution Tree experts over the last several years, and then continuing through that work. So it's essential for us at both high schools to continue the work and the journey that we're on in building professional learning communities that can complete that cycle, complete that loop, and do so in spite of, or because of, or enhance the work because of the pandemic situation that we're in. So we built the master schedule last year that would dedicate time for the four core areas, and now with the updated hybrid learning schedule that we have, and the time for professional learning on Wednesday, we can actually do a deeper dive. You see staff really support themselves, and support each other into that professional learning community work, and then within that, all the best practices in Canvas, and in what authentic or authentic assessment looks like in a remote or virtual manner. And then in addition, both, at both high schools, we have ongoing work in adopting StudySync, which is a learning management system and a curricular, longitudinal curricular platform to help our ELA department be more equitable in access to resources and longitudinally structure essential learning outcomes from incoming ninth grader through the graduating 12th grader. That work needed to continue, and we're able to do so with the professional development that we have on Wednesdays. On Wednesdays, and then we know that the district is committed to CP on math sixth through 12th grade, to our benefit of the Wednesday collaboration time, the ability for math instructors, sixth grade through 12th grade, have dedicated time to coordinate, do this with, again, within the workday, within the instructional day, and then have meaningful reaction to student progress and achievement as we've been here. So we know that, ensuring that students have a rigorous experience, equitable access to essential learning outcomes, the appropriate pacing, and then reacting to data, excuse me, is all the work that is wrapped up in our professional development. Six through 12, and it's really been an emphasis here at Memorial. Our folks, for the first time, have said to me, not only do we evaluate this PLC time, but we need more PLC time, we need more time to collaborate, we need more time to not dawn some of those traditional silos that you see in high school instructors and be able to collaborate. So that's time that we've done in the departments, and then that's cross-cutting skills across the building. And then that work with Canvas, being the connective tissue with our students and their families as they're into the remote learning time that they have away from them. So as we continue to work and support, excuse me, students both in the building and remotely, it's that relationship portion that we continue to work on and supported by our SCL work from teaching and learning and guidance department.
Thanks Dave.
Sorry Jim, I just had to cough up a second. And just the last, continue to support the SCL work within the classrooms that Kai Young and our guidance department is helping us develop both remote and on-demand SCL and best practices for students, to help them on their journey of how to continue to be resilient and function in this, in this post-secondary planning and the pandemic world.
Thanks Dave. And thanks for coming back for that one last little bit, I appreciate it. I did want to say also that I called each of these principals just over a week ago and gave them basically a very short A word, this is what the topic is, are you willing to just share your story in a slide or two? And that was our level rehearsal. And the part I appreciate in that story is the consistent messaging that you're hearing, because our, the type of things we're working on, those priorities are very consistent, equity, social emotional learning and that technology, training to be able to pivot to a variety of different environments. We know that we're on a journey, we're not quite there yet, but this is an area that we're focusing on. You had some concern about that earlier, but please know that it's being addressed. We're trying to be also at the district level, be responsive to building needs while at the same time establishing those priorities. I also wanted to look at my PD does honor past learning, so it isn't just, that's not the expectation moving forward, but it really does honor any learning that took place in those categories since August. It also allows for staff to have different sources of learning. So for example, if they've done some study in particular areas, that can, they can then get credit toward learning in a particular area like social emotional learning or equity, because we know that there are other avenues to be able to access that learning for staff. But really, our focus for our staff is outcomes, and just like we want outcomes for our students. And so we're really trying to emulate the things with our staff that we would want our staff to then do with their students. And I'd be remiss if I didn't give a big shout out to Becky Graff. Becky really is on the, has really done a lot of coordination and leadership of our professional development site and the work in that area. Actually, if you go to that professional development site, you'll be able to see the my PD link, and Becky was just updating it, like as the meeting was beginning, because we found some revisions we wanted to make. You can also listen to a wonderful video she made over the weekend that really talks staff through it. So we're sharing this with our all-staff tomorrow, but we're not sharing in a way that it comes in text, we're sharing it through video, so we talk to our staff just like we're talking now, so they can get some of that social emotional connection rather than just simply dry text. So those are my parting comments with it, but we will, any questions for me or any of the principals that presented tonight, we're happy to take those now.
Thank you Jim, and thank you to all four of the principals that cheered tonight. All right. Well, again, thank you. It's wonderful to see all of the work that our teachers are doing, and we want to express our appreciation for all of you and the continued development. You continue to improve as a staff and as a district. It's so important, and we recognize the value of that. So thank you very much. At this point, we will adjourn to our work session for tonight. Our work session tonight deals with the superintendent evaluation. We have a new superintendent, and we are in a transitional year from our previous model of governance into coherent governance, and it's a time where we need to reevaluate and decide what we'll do for evaluating our superintendent for this year as we transition. So our goal tonight will be to come to a consensus, both about the standards that we'll use in order to evaluate our superintendent for as long as we need this transitional model until we can get to coherent governance, as well as the data collection that we'll use at least for this year. Plan is to, for me to start out here and just talk a little bit about the WASB superintendent evaluation session that I was able to attend. Then we'll go over to Dr. Becca to talk about sort of the development of our proposal that she and I worked on drafting, and you received earlier this afternoon. Then we'll have some time for discussion. We'll start with the, talking about the standards that we want to use and try to get to a place where we feel good about those, and then we'll talk about the format of the data that we'll collect to get there for this time. I think part of it came down to a comment that Dr. Johnson made in agenda setting, that it's important to keep this efficient for both the superintendent and for the board in this process, so that we can make sure we make the best use of our time. Speaking of good uses of time, I did feel like the WASB session was very informative. And if you have a chance to just flip through the slides, there are quite a few of them. And they also presented a model that we are not going to use for this year, because we are moving towards coherent governance, which gives a, but I just wanted to go through some of my notes and just share with the board some of the few takeaways that I had. One of the first ones, I think, was the idea that it is a collaborative process. I don't, I know all of us have varying degrees in which we've been participating in evaluation. Certainly our university of professors and administrators have a lot of experience with evaluation, but some of us may not, or have evaluated differently people that are in our realms. So that collaboration, and that was one of the things that Dr. Becca and I wanted to build into our proposal, was getting together with Superintendent Johnson and talking about, you know, what are the things that you're wanting out of this so that we can help build that? And they really reinforced that quite a bit at the WASB. In line with that was the idea of evaluation not being a one-time thing, but instead a continuous feedback loop. One of the things that we've talked a lot about in developing coherent governance is the idea of communication, be that between the board and the superintendent, the superintendent and the faculty and staff. You know, that idea of continuous feedback and having those communication lines open is something that we'll want to have in place, and we're certainly going to be working on both with this evaluation and going forward. That was another thing that they brought up quite a bit. They did talk a fair amount about first-year superintendents. I'm sure that several of the participants, like me, were on boards where there was a new superintendent. And we are, there was no question that we were going to do the evaluation, but we are also required by Wisconsin state law to do an evaluation in the first year of a new superintendent. And then I was a little surprised to learn that you're only required to do it every third year after that, which seems like not the continuous feedback loop. And WASB was, you know, said, we don't recommend that you do that, but that is the statute that is on that. So, you know, coherent governance, when we get there, should provide us an ongoing feedback loop as we monitor policies and practices. So anyhow, there was some consideration about the formative versus summative assessments of a new superintendent. The WASB recommended actually doing two evaluations in the first year of a superintendent's tenure, one being in January as a formative type assessment, and then a summative assessment at the end of the year in July. Dr. Becca and I have talked about it a little bit, and she talked about it in her meeting with Mr. Johnson. And I think we might, we may talk about trying to split the difference when we get to that timeline section, but just sharing some of the things that WASB was on there. They did impress multiple times that it needs to be a quick turnaround, so when we do hold our evaluation, we'll have, of course, a closed session to discuss specifics with Mr. Johnson. But then the formal evaluation part, they, we want to make sure that that's completed, and the written document is available within two or three weeks after the session. So that'll be something that we'll have a little bit of work, and that does tend to fall, that does fall on the board president, so I will be the one accountable for getting that out, but we'll have that work to develop the written form together. And then the last thing was- And then the last thing was they, they of course took questions at the end of their session. And one of the things that all three of the presenters, and all three of them were members of the WASB search and organizational consulting wing, they were all three former superintendents that were now working on, you know, helping districts with search and organization after that. All three of them gave some words of caution about how to use feedback from principals and other, you know, employees that the superintendent is supervising. They recommended getting that data, but suggested that that data should really be between the superintendent and the principals, whether it's anonymous or direct, and not sending that directly to the board. And that's something that we're going to talk about when we talk about data collection. That was something that all three of them took up as a, as a question, you know, and should we have, you know, principal input? And they recommended, don't have that go directly to work. Get that and have that be a working goal with the principal in order to improve his or her performance. And we can talk about a little bit more about that why if we want to later. But that was one thing that came up in the questions that really the WASB consultants were united on recommending against. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Bika to talk about how some of these ideas and the things that we talked about in our meetings helped to inform the proposal. Marissa, at some point, if you could make me a presenter so I can share my screen when we get to actually sharing the proposal, so we can all be looking at the same document, I would appreciate that. Dr. Bika? Sure. If I bring up, so of course I was not immediately, there we go. Let's. Okay, so we have on the screen, and maybe I will. Well, yes, I probably can zoom in, but I'm feeling to figure out where to do it. Thank you, Marissa. How do we like that? Is that somewhat better? It's good. Dr. Bika?
This document that Dr. Nardine is sharing with you now is identical in many ways to the one that we shared back during our last work session. I would say there are two major differences that come from us as recommendations to you all to consider. And it just captured kind of the explanatory remarks that we made. So one major change is consideration of removing the standard called personal attributes. In fact, it's, it's not exactly removed. It's incorporated into other standards rather than serving as a standalone. So if you happen to be looking at the previous version, the first sentence in personal attributes has been moved now to the new standard, standard three, educational leadership. And the second sentence that was part of personal attributes, which spoke to the superintendent's understanding multicultural and ethnic, has kind of moved to an infusion model. And then infusion is really the second change of the document. So some new wording under each standard is one sentence or portion of a sentence that speaks directly to equity, diversity, and your inclusion. So you, you should spot something, let's talk about, you'll recognize these sentences or phrasing equity, anti-racism, anti-bias, diverse personnel, inequities in achievement. So other than those two changes, the standards are the same. I think the idea was to just get some, have a conversation and hear people's opinions about this as a, as kind of a framework to structure the evaluation.
Yeah, our hope certainly tonight is to kind of reach a generalized consensus that yes, this is, these are the standards that we would like to use for the evaluation for this year. And this time I'd be happy to hear, you know, comments and questions. Commissioner Lyons?
I think these standards look, look very good. So in the evaluation process, it's qualitative and qualitative review. What's the, what's the data that we're looking at to engage in?
Sure. I'll let you go ahead.
Sure. So we, at our last work session, we talked about for the past several years, the data had been self-evaluation of portfolio submitted by the superintendent. And that's something that if you remember from policy 225, that's one of the items that the board had requested the self-evaluation. And then the other component were just board members' observations and experiences. We talked about prior to 2017, there were years when the 360 degree evaluation tool was used. And I think having, I guess, thought about it myself, although I, I'd say I've not been part of a board when a 360 degree tool was used. So it's only what other people reported. But having, I think, reflected on it myself, I think, talking with Superintendent Johnson and then hearing the WASB recommendations, I, I found my own opinions really shifting in the direction of, of, I'm actually retaining the same approach as we have, as we had executed the past several years, which is a prepared portfolio by the superintendent and the board members' observations, collecting those materials. I know, I will, I will add one thing that, and I, for Superintendent Johnson, please feel free to join in. Please join in the conversation. That, that matters to me and to all of us, I think, quite a bit. I wouldn't have known without talking with you about the importance that you place for the four attributes, sincerity, reliability, competence, and care. And so we talked a bit about interest in collecting some data on these attributes, even in, in just the form of, could be something like simple lector type responses. Superintendent Johnson and I talked a bit about what would be the possible advantages or disadvantages of leaving those data as part of the formal evaluation versus to just have for his own personal role. And then hearing, I'd be interested in hearing more about the WASB recommendation, that these kinds of data perhaps should be just to the, you know, to the superintendent's.
Yeah, they were, I guess I said, they were all three former superintendents. And at least one of them was quite candid about the feelings that they generated by having that, the 360, getting that feedback. They did find it valuable, but of course had to sort of annually remind themselves that, you know, the outliers were not the indicator necessarily. So, you know, having to strip off some of the, you know, the maximum 10% of positive and negative to really try to look at where they are. And I think their, their focus was simply that board getting that direct information from principals then opens up sort of a, a feedback loop that is undesirable and maybe doesn't help with the ability of superintendent to work on those personnel issues and those management issues. If there are issues, it should be the superintendent that is working them out with the principals or other administrative staff. And really using that as a building block for themselves. But having the board get those direct, kind of stripped of that chain of command in a way that, that at least those, the consultants all felt was harmful to the collaborative process of, of evaluation. And, you know, they also, you know, they said, there will never be a time where there is some issue that is so deep that the board hasn't heard about it. You know, and so it just, their, their feeling was it didn't engender trust then between the board and the superintendent, the board and, and the superintendent and the administration. And so they, they recommended getting that, as you talked about Superintendent Johnson wanting to collect on, you know, those four values that are important to him. I think they all said, you know, we recommend having that data and having that conversation, having that built in with the principals and other administrative staff for the superintendent because that's part of growth and management and teamwork. So they were, they were firm on have that data, but they thought how the superintendent have, be the one who uses it rather than the board. So when you were talking about it being in that, that sort of, having consistency of idea on that for me as well, that I found myself. And then of course, as we think about coherent governance, that's a situation where we have that constant feedback and the administration is presenting their interpretation and the work that they've done and the board is using their statement. We feel that this is appropriate progress, progress with, you know, exceptions or, you know, not progress. And then using that then as a collaborative tool to figure out at what point do we need to take more action, adjust the policies, consider, you know, contracts and those sorts of things. So how do we help develop? Which again, have that sort of outside input, the direct feedback loop between partying thing, I think, you'd love to hear about that. So. Commissioner Harder?
Thanks. So the, is the recommendation that the, for example, the relation, you know, some assessment through a 360 or whatever mechanism of the, for example, the relationship between the superintendent and the principals, that that, if I'm hearing it correctly, that's best left, in the opinions you've heard, that's best left between the superintendent and the principals. My question is, and I, there's a kind of sense to that, I guess, in my mind at least. But my question is, what role in this proposal would, would the board have in understanding that? You know, as you say, we'll, you know, it's rare that a board won't hear of problems. But on the other hand, I don't like that being the only channel is, yeah, I'm going to hear about something through, you know, if somebody pipes up. So I, it gives me a little, I'm, you know, I can get to a place of comfort. We, we have eliminated the 360 a couple of years ago, I think, in, in working with the previous superintendent. And I had concluded at one point as a board that it was not an appropriate tool for evaluation. And so this is not a radical departure by any means. And I was part of that, agreeing with that. But I never fully understood it, to be honest, and I wasn't 100% sure. And I'm not 100% sure now. So I would welcome more discussion on it.
So I, I guess I would expect to see some of that information coming forward in the portfolio. You know, especially if I look at standard two, management skills and abilities, the relationship and the organizational work that superintendent is doing, I would expect to be a part of that presentation. And if I wasn't provided that, it would certainly be on my docket of things to ask. We, we actually heard tonight Superintendent Johnson, you know, he's doing some work, some organizational work. And I would expect a superintendent to have that be a part and parcel of something along the lines of a standard, of that standard two that we have there. But I, I think that you make a good point, Commissioner Harder. You know, how, where, where does that information come in? Yeah, I guess I'd be interested in hearing some more conversation about it as well.
Or does it come in at all? Maybe we say it doesn't come in and we're okay with that. I don't, I just, yeah, I'm just looking to seek clarity.
Yeah, again, I can see it coming in, in terms of a part of the portfolio under standard two, in this particular case, management skills and abilities, that that, that would be part of what was presented. You know, some of that feedback and whether it was the data that was presented there or learning points or ideas for going forward, that's where I would see it coming in. But yeah, I, I'd love to hear more. Commissioner Zer?
So in lieu of the operational expectations that we can monitor and, and ask for evidence of or artifacts of, how do we, or how in the past have you, has this been leveraged with the superintendent to, like, how have you asked for those things? How have you communicated expectation and then received? So if we wanted to, for example, I mean, I'm not saying that it, that it's right or wrong either, and I agree with Commissioner Harder that certainly, I've certainly felt both ways about the, the lack of the 360 in recent years. But I'm, I'm just curious as to how you guys have seen this in the past go where with, with the relationship, like, you know, because this is something we could just ask Mike for, like, hey, under standard two, could we have artifacts of evidence from staff of your, you know, I mean, I don't know, not knowing how this goes, I'd love to hear more about how it's gone in the past, I guess.
I guess, I, again, not having been part of a board that used a 360 degree, I, I can't speak to the experiences. I have felt in the time that I have been involved in the evaluation, I have felt satisfied with the content of the portfolio and that it was sufficient to me to be able to write an evaluation.
Dr. Johnson, was that you? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, i- i- if I may, I, I guess what I, what, what I'm struggling with and, you know, the, the standards are fine. We will, we will have to have, we will have to operationalize these standards to have some measurable outcomes. And I, I guess for me, when I, when I look at on slide 18 of the WSAB presentation slides that were, provided us, provided to us in terms of sources of evaluation, I, I guess the, the challenge, if we're going to have measurable, measurable outcomes that are agreed upon and are determined by Superintendent Johnson, there also has to be a consistency of those outcomes across multiple years. So fair valuation of either growth and development are taking place or no growth or development is taking place. And, and, and for me, when we go back to the standards that are listed, you know, for me, I, I guess, I would have to say for standard five, for me, the only, not the only, but really the, what would be an acceptable outcome, though, I would have to see artifacts from each of those pieces that have been identified in terms of considered the community. So there would have to be pieces from students, K through 12. There would have to be pieces from staff, not only our, our certified staff, but all staff, parents, media, and then the community. And so for me, once again, it's, we, we, we will have to do a, I think, a, a better job in our communication and conversation and deliberating on this, on what these, these outcomes and these artifacts will look like. But the artifacts, I guess I would struggle and I probably would not support where artifacts potentially change year to year or by evaluation. And I, I guess I would not support that because then you really don't get an, an understanding and a, a, a idea where, where growth is taking place amongst those, those varying standards. And so for me, I, as we move forward, so when I was looking at that WSAB, I really, this whole idea that the superintendent chooses, if that's going to be the, if, if that's going to be the direction that we take, then there, it has to be a consistent artifact. And I just get a little bit of reading in terms of the 360 and this self-determination of the artifacts. So potentially artifacts can change each evaluation, so the superintendent can actually make his or her case. And I'm not really sure I would, I, I would, I would go along with that, that I envision going along with that idea of evaluation. I'm fine with the standard. Operationalizing them to have a clear, clear measurable outcomes, that's really where, where we need to go. But also with the understanding that those outcomes have to be consistent over time. And that's kind of where, where I am and where I'm, I'm willing to, to support moving forward. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Dr. Johnson. I think it's important to remember that this, this format, we essentially intend to be used really for, for one year, because we'll be moving into coherent governance. And I think the consistency of, that you're talking about is important in coherent governance as well, because year to year you are evaluating the same set of policies, you know, barring changes by boards as we, as we go along and make necessary changes. But seeing that consistent growth on those areas, I think is an important point. For this one, I do, I do, we do need to remember that this is a transitional model and it won't be the one that we presumably hold for a long period of time. But I think your point is well made about consistency year to year, and we need to ensure that both as we go from this to coherent governance and within coherent governance. I appreciate that. Commissioner Clemens, we haven't heard anything from you. I wonder if there's anything that you would like to add at this point, otherwise we can open it back up for more discussion.
No, I think my pondering is more on how do we know, you know, a good job is being done or, or expectations are being met. And I'm trying to digest between Mark, Markwell and Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Bika, the comments about qualitative and quantitative measurements as well as presentation of artifacts. You know, because this is a, this is a different organizational context that I'm, that I'm used to in valuation and other contexts, where you, you have an apples to apples comparison oftentimes where, you know, we have one executive. So in that regard, it's difficult to, to make a, a direct comparison. So in that, in that regard, I'm, I'm just meditating on, on what does success look like, especially, especially given all the unusual circumstances of our current time. So with that regard, I'm more following along at this point.
Go ahead, Commissioner Harder.
Yeah, I, I do think it's a, it's good context to think of this in terms of a transitional evaluation approach that is consistent with past years, but which we know is deprecated essentially, and that we will be moving to coherent governance model whereby presumably the most important of these measures we'll be talking about in great detail as we set them up, and we'll be looking at them very closely on a calendar schedule at kind of the same time each year. That's one of the great appeals of, of coherent governance for me, is it, it kind of answers many, if not all, of the questions about superintendent evaluation. I think it's where it's many, if not all, that's again, where I get a little, you know, we're going to be looking at this, 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 you know, month by month as we go through our, our calendar each year. And then there are these kind of intangibles that of, you know, as we're talking about, like, well, how's the principal relationship, for example, or whatever the intangible may be of the moment, that we somehow don't have numbers for? And, and how do we reconcile, or do we say, you know, it's, we're going to ignore that stuff? Again, that we have to look forward to, those questions. But I think for now, if we talk about this as an interim for this year, that I feel comfortable with that, with these minor changes that we're talking about.
So it seems that a lot of our discussion is right around, you know, how do we collect the data and how do we ensure that we feel comfortable in making an assessment? Do we, do we have, are we all more or less okaying with the standards as they're presented in terms of the content? And then we could, we could focus the rest of our time on talking about the data collection? Or do we, do we need to change or add or drop some of the standard? Commissioner Zer?
So I just have one more, I just have another observation and kind of a question along with that of, if we know where we're going with coherent governance, is there any way, if, if what we need to look at is that growth over time, and we need to see consistency in artifacts, and we need to be able to, to monitor? So is, would this be, would this year be wasted then? Would we, would we not be able to use the data or be able to use the, the structure of this going forward? Is there, did you guys talk about tweaking this to, to be more in line with, with coherent governance, so that at least when we look at it next year or the year after, that we can actually see, rather than this one being kind of a, I don't want to call it a throwaway because it certainly is going to be valuable, but I'm just saying, will we see crossover with it?
So I, Dr. Bika and I did not specifically say, are we going to tailor this to exactly what our coherent governance will look like? Because of course, we're still in the development process. But I will say that we had discussion about how this leads into coherent governance. And as the person who's been doing most of the coordinating work, as I look at each of these, these are all, all of these are, are right in with line with what we will be seeing from the operational expectations and the results. What, what we probably won't get with this, Commissioner Zer, is the level of granularity that we'll get with a 12-month cycle of evaluating policy. And so we want to be able to have a baseline for every one of our, our things, but each of these is right in coherent governance, and we will see parts of these. So the information that we collect from this year, and to be honest, I see this year in many ways as a formative type here, because we have this new superintendent, and in just a second, I'll ask Dr. Bika to talk about potentially moving the timeline from January to March and why we might consider that for this evaluation. But, so we won't have a baseline for every single one of these, but we'll have a baseline for much of it, and we will be able to use that then to say for, you know, a first year, you know, when you're looking at then, you know, January of 2022, you know, hey, these are the things that we built on from last year, and the administration will be able to present in their reporting. This is where we started, this is the growth that we've made. So obviously, anything in here that we would not be able to catch, of course, you know, I, I could be a little pie in the sky on it, but I, I think we will have a, a firm baseline on many of the things, but not on everything, because we'll have a much more regular monitoring when we're in coherent governance. Commissioner Harder?
I mean, I do keep coming back to the question of, you know, for this year, then when and when do we define the artifacts that, you know, how much time do we have? I guess that's gets into your timeline questions and things, but I don't want to jump the gun on that. But it, you know, presumably there will be some process, so this is not quote unquote like throwaway year, which, you know, we want to do everything to avoid that, that notion. But it, but while recognizing that, it's going to be a very different year from what we intend to have going forwards. I don't know, is there a process that is part of the plan for, for just identifying those artifacts over, over a course of a few weeks or months?
Sure. And I will ask Superintendent Johnson, if you'd like to talk about how you see the, the process potentially of putting together this portfolio, maybe drawing on some of your previous experiences in other districts, you know, seeing other superintendents and working closely with them for this. How would you see the development in leading forward the artifacts that you might present in this format?
Well, first of all, I really appreciated the, first of all, this opportunity to discuss it in public tonight. Secondly, I did appreciate Dr. Bika's conversation on Friday, as well as the emails we've, we've been able to exchange with this. I guess from my previous experience and what I, what I've learned from other superintendents, and, you know, talking about, let's say, a 360, I, I've seen 360s work very well in some cases, and I've seen 360s actually be very harmful to the organization and to individuals in other cases. When I've, when I've been able to use that to my benefit, I've been able to use that as a tool then to share with my direct supervisor as part of the overall evaluation. I'm sure there are many different ways that people have used it in the Oakley Area School District. We had a little bit different situation probably 10 years ago to 12 years ago in River Falls, where I thought the 360 worked very well. And then up until two years ago, as recently as two years ago, I had done the same in my past position, where the entire superintendency and the assistant superintendents in the cabinet had, had used the 360. What I would, what I would like to do, regardless of how the board felt, whether it was more of a formative or in, to be used in a summative, would be to get some feedback from the executive team, the directors, the principals, assistant principals, members of our system leaders that I discussed earlier, and I've actually discussed often this year so far, 45 to 50 people, the people I probably will work most closely with. To get feedback from them, as Dr. Bika had stated, those are elements of trustworthiness, competence, care, sincerity, and reliability. And to use that bit of a scale with those groups of people, as well as teacher leaders, the ECAE Executive Board, that would be a good example where I could use that, if they would be willing to do so, where I could get some feedback on how I can improve and grow. And actually, if things are working well and they appreciate that, then continue that, as well as possibly the, the family advisory council. So those are just some ideas of, I guess, of where I would like to get some feedback from these people, these professionals, these groups, and then be able to, to bring that back, not just as evidence, but as some, some ideas for my own growth, but then to be used in a, in a summative format for the board to utilize. Because I do, I want to, and I think that would help on all five seasons. It would help in my transparency with the board, obviously, we hear transparency a lot and accountability these days. I do want to share that with the board, so you can adequately see that, that I'm being honest and trustworthy with this information, and I do hope to grow, because my success is your success. The management skills and abilities, same type of thing, where I think if I were to do that type of, getting that feedback, a bit of a, a reading from the people I work most closely with, you'd be able to determine, you know, standard two. The education, leadership, district operations, those would be, I think, probably the executive team. Now, the new executive team was all seven of us together. That would be, I think, most critical and most closely related within, you know, these walls. And then the relationship with the community, I've seen a variety of, of options. For example, you know, the relationship with the two student members of the, you know, that could go into evidence, but what I would also like to see is, at some point, and I shared this in my interview in April, would be a, a youth advisory council at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. That was in policy in my previous district, that is not in policy here. But I think it's important for students to have a voice in their district. Once again, that's just an idea, but I think that would show very good evidence of my relationship with a part of the school community. So I'm very comfortable with the standards. In fact, it kind of seems like the themes that, that I think I answered questions about in the entire interview process in March, April, in the, for this position. So I, I do think it would be somewhat of a different year because of the pandemic and the challenges we face. It's somewhat of a transition year, but I think it would be a good foundational element, building block for years to come.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyons?
I wanted to highlight a couple of things the superintendent said. I, I think that, first off, we haven't even really cycled through a full year. And so I think that under a normal circumstance, I, I would want to see at least 12 months in an evaluation process under a normal circumstance. But what we have in the middle of the pandemic is a circumstance unlike any that we've ever seen. And I too have seen 360s work very well when the scale is somewhat smaller, and sometimes even when those responses are not just anonymous, where it's individuals that are giving feedback in order to help improve the performance of, of their laws. When I've seen 360s be somewhat harmful is when they're anonymous and they're open up to a very, very wide area. And then what I think we're going to see in this odd year is the kind of polarized thoughts about whether or not some of the decisions that we've made have, have been, have been the ones that, in the opinion of the person giving the, the feedback, was appropriate. And if you had a goal of saying that the goal is to, to stop or contain the spread of the virus in the school environment, we've done very well with that. We've done outstanding at that. If there was the goal of, is the scheduling around classes, I think that we could have been stronger on that. And so I think that as this moves forward, that that 360 really needs to be considered in, in a much different way because of the circumstance that we find ourselves in and in, in the, in the position. So I, I agree with many of the things he said, and I thought it was well said.
So one, I'm, I'm not hearing a board member objection or superintendent objection to the overall standards. So unless we hear something different, I think we'll kind of consider that our consensus reached. And I think Commissioner Lyons, what you said about the timeline, you know, wanting to have, you know, at least that 12 months when you do an evaluation, I think leads potentially nicely into a discussion of when we should do this evaluation. And Dr. Bika and Superintendent Johnson talked about perhaps moving it, and we, I think, without specifically saying, I think that's part of our recommendation right now, is to potentially, to consider doing the evaluation in March rather than January. Dr. Bika, like, if you could share some of the thought processes behind why we might want to do that?
So there is a timeline in Policy 225, Superintendent Goal Setting and Adoption of Goals in February, interim progress report in July, formal evaluation to be completed in December. So, well, as Commissioner Lyons mentioned, this year is different, of course, because we don't have a full annual review. And when Superintendent Johnson and I spoke, what emerged from that conversation for me was really the sense that December timeline was something too early. And that we, you know, one, I, in some ways, I think the most troublesome thing for me about this entire process is that we have not engaged in any superintendent goals setting of that. And so, you know, we think about operationalizing standards and, I guess, artifacts, and, you know, that would be a, a fully collaborative process that we have not engaged in. It made sense to me that between now and March was a more reasonable timeline, recognizing, though, that the next year's evaluation, that it would be, you know, the period, it would be something.
So all that being said, if we were to move it to March, I think because our policy spells out evaluation in December, January, it would basically require a board action. So if we could just spend a couple of minutes discussing if there are, you know, people's reactions or feelings to potentially doing the evaluation in March, if we come to consensus on that, we could probably put it on a consent agenda for we could probably put it on a consent agenda for the next meeting. So if we could just focus right now on just that little piece, then we can go back to discussing the format. Dr. Johnson?
So with the suggested change, our timeline in the evaluation, I guess, can you just provide clarity then, then if we were to move this to March, but then will the expectation then be then to shift back to January, the following evaluation? I guess I need clarification, because what would end up happening then, we're also saying, and, you know, my apologies, for President Oden, I did not read your timeline, but I guess the underlying assumption is, is if we moved it to March, also probably what has to happen by this mid-evaluation and by December, that we also already have our coherent governance model already set up. And still, could you just provide some clarification of making the adjustment in March, but then it's still in our policies that then the next evaluation comes back around in January? So I'm just a little bit, could you just provide some clarity there? Thank you.
Yeah, so I think the intention is, in fact, to go back to a December-January cycle, as dictated by policy, in turn, and that would be again, January of 2022. The move to March would just be for this year, recognizing that we have a brand-new superintendent, and we have this pandemic that's changing everything. In terms of how it lines up with coherent governance, the goal that I've set for the board for this work is to be able to adopt our coherent governance policies at the second meeting in April, and basically start on that, starting with May. So we would not have a full year of coherent governance, you know, evaluation going forward to that next, that first evaluation in January, because the timeline doesn't line up directly. But that's, again, just a growth process over time. So just for this, yeah, we're just suggesting that this be a one-time move to March because of, again, the new superintendent and the pandemic, and as Dr. Beeka, I think, pointed out, is the opportunity to have some superintendent goal setting and work collaboratively on that would give us a little bit more time there. And then, yes, we would, the summative evaluation for the superintendent then going forward would be in January, as dictated by our policy. And we, you know, with coherent governance, we have kind of ongoing monitoring, so we'll be building up that evaluation as we go. But that's, I hope, a little bit of clarity on what we're looking at with those two things. Commissioner Harder, did you have something that you wanted to add? I think I saw you unmute a while back.
Uh, yeah, I will say it, I guess. My, I'm just was recollecting for myself, the January timeline, as I recall, was related to the contract. It's really the contract that has the legal requirement around it, not so much the evaluation. And I think they were, they've been hitched together for understandable reasons, but is that, so I guess the point being, we're certainly free to move it to March if we want to, and just confirming that. Has been, everybody check that out?
Well, in Policy 225, and I understand what you're talking about with the connection date-wise to the contract, Policy 225 does identify February goal setting, interim progress report in July, formal evaluation completed in the summer.
Did it say, did you say summer? It says, the policy says it would be completed in the summer?
In true progress report in the summer is July.
Yeah.
Evaluation completed in the summer.
Right, yeah. Yeah, anyway, but we're, it's fine to move this legally, that's been all vetted. That was my question, really.
Well, the, in a way, the dates are divorced, in the sense that the superintendent has a two-year contract.
Yes. That makes sense. For this year, it certainly makes sense, yeah. Great, thank you.
And I just want to note, as Dr. Beeka, you know, gave us the dates on 225, I guess when I'm saying January, I'm meaning that when the formal letter is filed, if we complete the formal evaluation in December, then the board would go, and then, I guess, I at this point, or whoever the president is at that time, then completes that formal letter for the file to go in, and that would happen in January. So it's that, that's what I mean when I, I guess I'm saying January, and I just want there to be clarity there, too. Commissioner Zer?
I was gonna make a comment about, you had said about coherent governance being, we won't have a full year of coherent governance, so technically, we would not be able to do a full monitoring under coherent governance until 2023. Am I correct in that?
Well, sure, there's got to be some role time in order to have gone through all of the full calendar.
Right, so I, well, would we, if we're gonna switch it, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we switch it to align with the coherent governance calendar? I mean, I'm just saying, like, I'm just saying, if we're gonna switch the date, why don't we, why wouldn't we switch it to align with a full annual monitoring of those, of those, wow, results, that's the word?
I think there's something to be said for that, and certainly as we develop the annual work calendar for the board, that's one of the ongoing tasks that we'll need to do in preparation for that. That's something to consider for future. I personally don't think it's a big deal to have, you know, you put it into place, and then you get your partial monitoring, and then as soon as that's over, you know, you've got full monitoring every year from there. But that's, I think that's a question for the, you know, the annual plan for the board, and it may, that may then involve, you know, as we adopt coherent governance policies, that means that, that may mean that the administration may have to adjust their district policy 225 to match that. And I think that's a question we can think about going forward. I guess by statute, we would not have to complete a, an evaluation in the following year, because it is only once every three years by Wisconsin statute. Obviously, we've all expressed our desire to continue to have that communication loop, to continue to have that accountability and for growth and for ensuring the progress of the district. So I don't think that's an issue, but you bring up an interesting point to look at for going forward. So I think that's worth discussion, and I'll go back and I'll note that in the workflow document for coherent governance, that that's something that the calendar group can look at as we complete the work plan. Maybe that is something we should change. I think it probably does come down to Commissioner Harder's point that, you know, if we have that evaluation in December, then the board is ready in January to make contract decisions, you know, for extension or whatever. So I think, I think that does make December a good time, but again, that's a conversation for a day that is not, like, tonight. Commissioner Harder?
Well, then, sorry, just briefly on that point, it does seem to me it's kind of a cycle, and you can kind of get on wherever you want, in terms of, we're going through this cycle of assessments that we set up, and we can kind of climb on and say, this is the start of the year, pretty much wherever we want, I feel, but anyways, probably for another night, as you say.
So, go ahead, Commissioner Zer.
Well, that said, I would fully, I don't know what I need to say, but I am, I am fine with adjusting this year's evaluation calendar to March.
Are there any objections to doing so? All right, so then, maybe we'll have that as a consent item, then we can talk about in agenda setting tomorrow, how to word that, but it'll just be, essentially, Policy 225 to move it to March, essentially. So the only comment we have sort of left that I'd like to have, have us try to reach kind of a consensus, is on that data collection. Do we feel okay in general about the idea of the portfolio and board assessment as being the mechanisms? The specific artifacts in the portfolio, I think, you know, we'll still have to do some collaborating, and maybe part of the goal setting that we do with Superintendent Johnson. But just in general, are we okay with that, or do we want to specifically include more? Or I guess we could say less, too? Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, I guess I'm, now, I guess I'm not following. So when you, when you said more or less, isn't the determination between a conversation between the superintendent and the board? So I guess I'm, where did I lose where, I guess, the more or less? Has anything been decided already? And if so, it's, isn't the communication between the board and the superintendent in terms of the amount that's included in these particular evaluations? Or does one, or does one already have more say than the other?
Well, I think the more or less is actually, do we want to demand that beyond the portfolio and our assessments of that portfolio and, you know, board assessment, you know, we could add, we definitely want to do a 360. We definitely want, you know, a community, I'm spitballing here, and I don't think that would be a good idea, but I mean, there are things that the board could say, you know, we can have these things. And so ultimately, the board is responsible for deciding how to do the evaluation. We've tried already to have that be a somewhat collaborative process with Superintendent Johnson, and I'd like that to be the case going forward, but certainly, if we, the board are saying, we definitely want a 360, we can add that to the format. So right now, the format that Dr. Beeka and I have suggested is a superintendent portfolio, and we would collaborate on what artifacts and how much is going into that portfolio for each standard, and that would be a development process, I think, along these next few months. But it's additional things that I'm, that I'm asking if we want to add, or if the rest of the board, I mean, Dr. Beeka and I, again, have proposed this. And certainly, you know, just to have the door wide open, we could also say, we don't want to see a portfolio, which, again, I think would be a terrible idea, but we could say that, too. And so I just wanted to leave that open for discussion. Commissioner Harder?
Uh, just, can we address the question of how district report card would fit in, and some of the, you know, ideas, like disaggregating that data down and looking at achievement gaps and things like that? How would that, do we have already a position on how that would fit into this?
My reaction is that that fits very well into standard three, educational leadership. Specifically, we added the language from our search criteria and the job description of the superintendent, you know, but, "Liding district-level administrative action to improve student achievement." I mean, it's right there, and I, if it's not a piece that includes the district report card, then I would ask, where is that? Because that certainly is at least one benchmark of achievement. And then the, you know, the unwavering commitment to race, class, and gender equity, and initiating practices policies, is part of that disaggregation as well. So we're looking for those, for those pieces. So that's my instant reaction of where does that, that fit? It's right in standard three.
I, I mean, sorry, I didn't mean to say, what, where does it fit in the standards? Because I'm satisfied the standards cover it. My question is, is it an artifact that we seek, and where, what, it is set in our, you know, there are a lot of questions about it, that we will have to clarify before we get to that assessment day, right? And so, again, I'm just sort of pondering when that clarification will happen, and is it okay for us to say tonight, oh, well, it's the superintendent portfolio that we're focusing on, then, oh, but we forgot to talk about school report card, or we forgot to talk about this or that, you know, and now are we stuck, or the implications of this, of this call right now that we're making?
Sure. To my mind, those things are all included in the portfolio, and again, I would call out, where are they if they're not included in the portfolio? But I think having some of that discreetly said is certainly helpful. Commissioner Zer?
So then, just to add on to Commissioner Harder's comment, will we see at some point, so I'm assuming that the whole board doesn't like have coffee with the superintendent and say, yeah, what do you think? What are you gonna show us? Well, here's what we'd like to see. I'm assuming that that gets narrowed down to an individual or two, and at what point do the rest of us then see the, you know, the list of artifacts and have a chance to offer feedback or make additional requests?
With Dr. Beeka, then we'll go Commissioner Lyons.
I, actually, is, the goal setting is collaboration between superintendent and the entire board. And that's, again, it's somewhat difficult to imagine, because this year is, it's so short, it's such a short timeframe that we've all been working together. And so I guess I, for me tonight, I imagine that the decisions we would make, should these standards be the framework, and what would the timeline, what's a reasonable timeline? And then we enter into that goal-setting work. I don't think you can identify artifacts without first knowing your goals. That's back to Dr. Johnson's point about operationalizing the variables here. So I think it probably is a little bit premature, you know, talking about the district report card, you know, for me, I'd have to consider that as part of the goal setting. I don't think I would be willing to consider that as anything more than baseline data, because it's essentially been adopted, and you know how slowly that those data change. But anyway, that's, so the goal setting comes first, and then through that work going down by the artifact.
That goal setting will happen at a, we can schedule that as a future closed session, since it deals with, you know, this is more of a general discussion about how do we evaluate a superintendent when we're talking about specific goal setting, we'll do that in a closed session with Superintendent Johnson. Commissioner Lyons?
So to piggyback on something that Commissioner Beeka said, these standards are the foundation of the evaluation, and I would think that during this conversation, that Superintendent Johnson has probably started to formulate some things in his mind in what would be the portfolio. And if it's a collaborative process, I would think that he might be able to sketch out some of those artifacts and be able to bring it to the board and share it with us in that collaborative process, and maybe we say, well, there's a couple of things in here we'd like to see, and we have that conversation back and forth, and essentially build the portfolio. In my mind, that's how I see this moving forward.
Thank you, Marissa. So at this point, do we sort of feel like we have a consensus about those parts, and then where we'll do the rest of that operationalization? That's not a word. But where we'll do the rest of that collaborative work? Great, then, it looks like we sort of have our setup, and we will schedule a goal setting, superintendent goal setting session in front of a future board meeting as a closed session. We'll probably talk about that at our agenda setting, just as a skeleton, tomorrow. Don't forget, agenda setting will be at 1:00 PM tomorrow. And at this time, then, I would like to ask for requests for future agenda items, and I can have the, I can stop sharing my screen. And then seeing none, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Commissioner Clemens, second by Lyons. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us. please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org.